I exit, re-enter meeting.
No, you're good Frank.
Okay, all I can see is you free at the, free at the front dais.
Yeah, that's right.
Do you want me to move it to somewhere else?
No, no, I just, just like, don't be able to raise my, raise my hand or anything else.
No, I can, I can see, if you, if you raise your hand from the menu, I'll be able to see it.
I can't, the menu will not open at the moment.
If you just hover over your own picture and there's three little dots at the top of the screen in blue, right next to the mute.
My own picture is not displayed.
Oh, then at the bottom, you need to start, oh no, your video is on, huh, I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
Should I exit, re-enter?
No, just wave at me.
Oh, I know, maybe try at the very top, um, under the speaker view, do you have speaker view up, or do you have a different view up?
Very top right.
I've got no control over anything, I can hide the video, I can do audio. I've only got four selections available.
Okay, we are, we are live whenever you're ready.
All right, just wave at me Commissioner. I'm gonna call the Oregon City Commission to order for Wednesday, June 17, 2020, it's about 7:08 PM. Uh, we had an exec session prior to this, and the results of, uh, that discussion will happen later in this meeting. Call roll please.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle-Smith, here. Commissioner Rocky Smith, here. Commissioner Denise McGriff, present. Commissioner Frank O'Donnell, here. Mayor Dan Holliday, here.
So, please, Dan, join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, got nothing on the ceremonies, proclamations, and presentations, or are there anybody for general public comment?
There are.
Uh, let me go to my screen so I can see them.
And we have more than just that one, I have to let a few people in here.
On the floor. So, Commissioner Mullen?
I can't start my time yet, I have to do my disclosure. Just so everybody knows, and I'm, I'm clear with everybody, um, I do live with the mayor, his words are his words, my words are my words, his statement does not affect me, I do not affect his statement. So, at this time, I'd like to talk to Commissioner Denise McGriff, and ask her, at Sunday's meeting, the emergency meeting, you said that, um, you'd been working with Patrick and HR on policies, and that you were liking it, you wanted to do it behind the scenes. And given today's climate and what the mayor's going through, I'm hopeful that everybody works in front of the dais, and, um, that you communicate with your fellow commissioners, that you're working with, um, a director, because obviously, the directors didn't, the commissioners didn't know. But, I just would like, with the climate and what the mayor's going through, I want a lot of transparency with our governor and with our commissioners, please, thank you.
I would like to respond, if I may, because I think you misconstrued what I said.
Go ahead.
Thank you Mayor. I have regular meetings with different department heads, over the time that I've been on the commission. I've had two meetings with Mr. Foiles. The first meeting involved just getting to meet him and know him, and he and I had a discussion about where the city might be going with regard to diversity, inclusion, and equity. And he and I had a discussion about where he was going to go with that, there were no policies that have been developed. I have then, since then, had a second meeting with Mr. Foiles, as I've had with all the department heads, and forgive me, um, Mr. Williams, I haven't had a meeting with you yet, but we're working on it. So, my second meeting was to just touch base with him, to let him know, um, that I had been meeting with the other department heads, and those meetings were going well because he is the personnel director. And each time that I've met with Mr. Foiles, as well as the other department heads, I had the permission of the city manager, and I informed the city manager what I was going to be doing with just getting to know the directors, and, you know, we just generally talked issues, and we followed up with my discussion with him in December, and he indicated that he had some policies that he was working on, and I let him know that I would look forward to working with my fellow commissioners on, uh, whatever he would come up with. And that was the extent of my conversation. So, those meetings do happen behind the scenes, I don't have the department head meetings out in the public, but, again, they're, my purpose is to let the department heads know me, um, me to know them, and work on areas of mutual concerns of mine, and also mutual concerns of our citizens in the city. So, that is the extent of my, my behind the scenes meeting with department heads, including Mr. Foiles.
Thank you. So, next we have, uh, Sarah Head, is she on the phone?
She is, Sarah Head is on the phone, and I'm gonna go ahead and unmute her mic now, and then she can begin by stating her first and last name for the record, and then also her city of residency, and she has up to three minutes to speak.
And this is not, uh, something that is not currently on, or is currently on the agenda tonight?
Uh, my understanding was she wanted to speak under citizen comment, not something that's on the agenda.
All right.
Sarah, it's your turn to speak.
Hello. Uh, yep, am I coming through clear?
Yeah, just state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Sarah Head, a resident of Oregon City. Oregon City stands at a unique historical vantage point. As the first incorporated city in the Oregon Territory, for many, we represent progress, expansion, and ingenuity. For others, we represent betrayal, exclusion, and genocide. This is not a debate, the duality of history is fact, and we can no longer ignore and malign the pieces that don't fit into the positive narrative we present. It is time for the city of Oregon City to fully honor and represent the spectrum of peoples and their history through both our actions and our policies. The following recommendations will set us on a path to do so. One, a complete organizational assessment of current practices conducted by a non-governmental organization to create equitable and inclusive policies and procedures. Two, required equity, diversity, and inclusion training for city leaders and department heads, with future trainings for all city employees, including the Oregon City Police Department. Three, establishment of a special commission on equity and inclusion comprised of citizens, city officials, community organizations, and business leaders, to frame and create initiatives and strategies to confront race and racism, increase diversity and inclusion in Oregon City, as well as address the historical legacy of white supremacy in our city. Four, assessment of hiring policies and recruitment, along with intentional hiring efforts and HR policies to increase diversity and inclusion in city government. Five, investment in black and person of own col- uh, color-owned businesses through city initiatives and city contracts, as well as the removal of barriers that often prevent this investment. And six, active partnership with and investment in sovereign nations and organizations such as the nine federally recognized tribes of Oregon, the Oregon Black Pioneers, and the Oregon Historical Society, in order to bring a fuller perspective of history to our city, and to make that history visible. We are experiencing a reckoning, a groundswell of support for black, indigenous, and people of color, as well as recognition of systemic inequities and injustices. It is up to each of us, and every city in our nation, to commit to making sustainable, transformative change. Otherwise, we will find ourselves back here, again, and again, and again. Anti-racism and anti-bias work is not something we do when we think we need it, we act on it because we know that inequity is inherent in our work and systems, and we must consistently fight against it, and we cannot deny that these forces are acting in our city. Implementing and taking these actions must be our new normal, one we must work hard to achieve and sustain. We will not create change by saying we want it, it will only be created through transparency, action, and investment. You have the opportunity to transform our narrative of our city and ourselves, do not fail us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen?
Okay, hold on, just a second. Mr. Mullen is also, um, on the phone, so I will need to unmute him, and then... Up here, sorry.
Thank you, Shaw, go ahead.
Yes, state your name and, uh, city of residence for the record, please.
Okay, uh, members of the commission, good evening, my name is John Mullen, and my wife Ellen White and I have lived in Oregon City for more than thirty years. Um, this is my first time, however, testifying before the council, and I ask for your consideration tonight. Uh, I'm here today, uh, to talk about the future of our policing, I realize you are likely in active discussion, given the Black Lives Matter protests and the rallying cry for changing police roles and practices and redeploying resources. As a citizen, I am unaware of how oversight of the police works in Oregon City, and whether there is citizen participation in that effort. I want to stress that I have no current concerns about our police department, and this is not a complaint, however, I believe states and localities must take steps to reimagine community safety. I am hoping Oregon City will be engaging this deliberation. I believe the leadership should come from the council and citizen staff by communicating with the public and asking for participation in this important discussion. I know my wife and I would be pleased to participate, thank you for your consideration, and I also just want to add, um, that I really appreciated the previous testimony, and pleased to hear about diversity, equity, and inclusion tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Uh, not for just citizen comment.
Okay. So, with that, we'll move on. Um, is everybody okay with the agenda? Minus the changes on the consent agenda.
Yeah, which items did we have on that list?
Uh, I don't know, we'll get, we'll do it when we get there.
Okay, okay.
Um, so, first up, public hearing, 6A, PC 20-082, first reading ordinance, 20-1-006, Thimble Creek Concept Plan, Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, Code and Zoning Amendments, legislative file 19-03, Ms. Turway.
She'll be, she'll be right in.
Okay.
Christina's there.
Oh yeah, okay.
So, Christina, you taking this one?
Christina's in the elevator.
Yeah.
There she goes.
Ms. Robertson-Gardner, go ahead, please.
Your preference.
Oh, and here's, here's your boss, Ms. Turway, now.
Okay.
Good evening, Laura Turway, Community Development Director for the city of Oregon City, I'm proud to introduce Christina Robertson-Gardner, Senior Planner with the City.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, just to remind, there's a, just a three-slide PowerPoint, I think Katie's gonna be putting up, but to, uh, remind you that at the last meeting on June 3rd, the city commission allowed additional testimony, and staff requested to continue to provide feedback, uh, what you have this evening is three additional items to be entered into the record. One, the Thimble Creek Utilities Supplemental Findings, which are attached to your agenda. Second, we received a National Resource Committee memo this today, that has been forwarded on to you, uh, requesting, uh, additional protection in the upland habitat areas. Uh, staff has, uh, provided revised ordinance with additional language, that, um, provides clear direction to staff, uh, to support retention of upland habitats through existing tools we have in development code, such as density transfers, uh, preservation tracks, and the master planning process. Um, I'm available to answer any questions. Just to remind everybody that, um, this is a piece of the puzzle, the zoning packet for the Beaver Creek, Thimble Creek Concept Plan Amendments, there's still a fair amount of to-do list, such as continuing to work on our economic development strategies, coordinating with the college and the high school unemployment training, continue to work with TRIMET on transit service opportunities, and additional work for future capital improvement projects such as Beaver Creek Road, the new water reservoir, and citywide park SDC review. I'm available for any questions the city commission may have.
Okay. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner McGriff?
Uh, yes, um, Christina, just have a question about, let me get to the page here. Just wanted some clarification on the, on page 11, where we talk about additional public park and open space requirements. We talk, um, I know we have this in other ordinances, where we talk about, um, that we want to have parks, and, uh, we want to be able to get dedication, then when you get down to, um, item C, that we may accept, and it says "may," which I like, it doesn't say "we shall," is we may accept a fee in lieu. So, just hypothetically, um, if we really want to get parks in there, is that gonna be sort of like the last alternative? Because I think that just doing in lieu of, if we haven't exhausted any other opportunities, really, um, allows us to miss out on getting parkland for this area that we really desperately need.
Uh, I think you're correct, and we provided a kind of a secondary opportunity if it just didn't make sense, um, especially if it's a, you don't know what, how development's gonna come in. The way the, the park amendments code is written is, there is a kind of sense of park overlay for the central open space, uh, which is the pearl and spring, and if you have a development that lies within that, we want to see the population calculation based on the number of dwelling units, and the appropriate, uh, sized park to be dedicated. The reason why we added the fee in lieu of, for some reason, if maybe you have a really small development, and so therefore, uh, the equation, the calculation comes out too, too small of a property that we don't want to take as a pearl, we definitely heard from the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee that, I think, three, two acres was the smallest they want as a size of a pearl. So, there may be an odd small project where fee in lieu would be the best option, but, um, acquisition, i- if your property was, is within that overlay area, acquisition would be the first approach.
Would we also be encouraging, strongly encouraging, development to use, uh, PD approach, so that we can get that particular type of land that we're interested in with the overlay?
Can we, uh, what is PD?
Planning and development.
Okay.
Oh, um, well, the planning and development is through the master plan process, which we, we, uh, because of the properties that are already inside the city limits, we can't require, we have to provide a clear and objective. So, our goal is, if your property is within the area identified in the exhibit for the Parks Master Plan of the central open space, and you have a project big enough to provide at least two acres, we would like to see that as a pearl, dedicated as a part of your development project. That's through a type-two process.
Commissioner Lyle-Smith?
Thank you, so, um, the parks fee in lieu, um, piece, I assume this is directly tied to our later agenda item about adding planning fees? Or a fee for non-residential development, correct? Uh, Christina, can you talk about the difference?
Mm-hmm. So, the, um, during the planning process, um, with the code amendments, there was an understanding that the two parks identified are in more of the residentially zoned areas, both the, um, to the south, um, and so, not understanding kind of how big a project was, and if, um, a multifamily development would be in a larger, you know, subdivision application, we wanted to make sure that all residential properties provided ability for dedication, and if they were not in that area, then there was a valuation that could provide fee in lieu. Through the planning commission process, and through conversations with the Park and Rec Advisory Commission, there was a clear direction that not only residential, but non-residential, um, be participating in parks acquisition and interim development, whereas most of, all of the commercial properties and campus industrial do not have any parks areas identified in their, in their, um, zone. Therefore, a fee in lieu made more sense as a, as a way to provide, um, evidence that they are participating in the parks acquisition and interim development, um, but through a fee in lieu, so that money could be used for acquiring additional park space, uh, maybe make the pearl larger, or provide money for interim development such as utility sidewalks or in, in interim grading for existing parkland that has been acquired.
So, what will happen, because we have two agenda items related to this, if we move this one forward, but we get to our later agenda item, which is being pulled from the consent agenda to discuss, if the commission decides against the fee, hypothetically, where does that, how does that affect this first and second reading process?
Did you don't even speak?
Commissioner, Mr. Kabaisman?
We're all looking at each other, sorry.
He advised that I cannot hear the attorney if he's speaking.
Yeah, Mr. Kabaisman, I can't hear you either.
Uh-oh.
Is your button on?
The button is on. If I speak up, does that help any, or is it still spotty?
I can barely hear you.
Move over a mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Ah, okay, okay. The one I could see was on. Um, so, the question is about what, what happens if this passes, but the later, uh, fee, um, proposal doesn't pass. This would amend the conference plan and the code, and those changes would be in effect. Part of what is in the plan is the expectation of some additional, uh, money, as I understand it, and so, the city and, uh, the commission and staff would have to think about how to approach that, whether that would be amending the amendments we just made, or, you know, figuring out another way to get those funds that are anticipated in the code and plan.
And if I could just add to that, too, um, the piece that's later is just for commercial institutional development or industrial development. It's actually, it's not that much money, it's $1,000 for every 5,000 square feet of space, so it's not anticipated to bring in a whole lot of revenue to the park system anyway. Um, as a future fund, as a future agenda item, the city does need to go back and look at citywide parks and SDCs to figure out how that relates to, um, building out parks within the con, the all-concept plan areas, actually. So, this is one step, and the tool that we're using, zoning, there is separate steps and things that we need to address, which is SDCs to make sure that the facilities get built, even though we were, this will help us acquire the land, but building what's on top of the land is still a future discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm trying not to have a discussion about our later agenda item, um, but, um, so, I guess we'll just deal with it, depending on how that goes. Um, I will say that, um, it does trouble me a little bit that, uh, the fee in lieu, the way it was described, um, shall be, shall be used for the city, by the city for park trail and open space acquisition and interim site development. This feels, and, and the way it was described, maybe by Christina, um, was that it could be used for other interim development pieces?
It would be, it would be interim development associated with a park, so if there was a development happening, if, if, um, this money could be used, for a sense, while there is a budding, uh, subdivision development, this money could be used to help, uh, with concurrent grading of the site at the same time, or for, uh, putting in budding utilities which would be required by the, uh, park at the time of any development, so be, pre, 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 um, implementing some of the requirements of a park prior to the construction of the actual park, so it's allowing some interim use and interim development to happen, um, of that parkland before the formal Parks and Master Plan, uh, is approved that builds the park.
So, we want...
So, to clarify, that money, that fee in lieu money, would have to be used to construct, to construct or buy land, or preconstruct a new park. It could not be used for park maintenance and other places in the city. Is that generally what's going on there?
Correct.
Okay, does that answer your question, Commissioner Lyle-Smith?
Yes.
Anything else?
No, I'm not on board with the fee, so I think we're gonna come back to this, but...
Okay, well, that's fine, I was just talking about right now.
But, for right now, yeah, it's a challenging...
Commissioner Smith, you have anything? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, I share Commissioner Lyle-Smith's concerns, and I appreciate the fact that she linked, connected the dots, once again, between another peripheral item that applies to this, and quite honestly, I would have expected staff to make reference to it rather than the commission having to bring it up, so I would, I would hope in the future, we do those things. I also saw, in, uh, the presentation, reference to a new water reservoir and ongoing discussions with Clackamas River Water, and I hope that we are connecting the dots and that staff is aware that, uh, we have already given direction that we want to go our own way and want to control our own destiny, even if that involves building our own reservoir. So, there, I don't want to get in a lengthy discussion about that, that may be for a later time, but I, I want everybody to know that that's a concern. You know, our goal, when this, when this division was promoted, it was to provide local employment and give people the opportunity to live here, in fact, the previous saying was "live here, work here." And yet, we foregone the economic development portion of it, which I know is difficult, and we're going immediately to residential, which is a thousand-plus units, which is gonna put demands on our transportation system, because if people have nowhere here to work, once again, we become a bedroom community to somebody else. So, I'm not here to put pressure on a, a man doing a good job, James Brown, but we need to kick it in gear and do the economic business development component of this, and I don't know, maybe this is a question for the attorney, in the future, can we demand that there's a sequence of events that the, the business component of the development is, is accomplished or committed to prior to we entering into the residential? And that's a question for Mr. Kabaisman.
Mr. Kabaisman? There are ways to accomplish that, for example, you know, in our decisions to annex or not annex, to annex commercial development, to, um, plan the extension and water sewer to run through commercial properties before they get to residential problem.
Can I stop here? Is there anything we can do now?
Um, that's a bigger question, and, and to, I'm not certain I can answer that right now, in terms of how, what the next steps in Thimble Creek to, uh, mandate that commercial comes in before, commercial gets developed before residential, that's a fairly significant question that we'd have to think through, and I want to talk to Ms. Turway and, and...
So, let me ask you a follow-up question to that, so, we've already annexed it, and this is the zoning?
Yes.
Okay. So, those are only two opportunities, is you own it, or you zone it. So, if you want to mandate something, you're gonna have to do it now, because once we pass this, then it, it's just at the mercy of the market.
That's correct, once something's zoned, y- you know, the only caveat I would put to that is that they've got to show that it can be served by utilities, the water, the sewer, the transportation.
Right.
And, you know, depending on how that master plan plays out, um, there, there may be some opportunities there to, to control the, the direction of growth.
Okay.
I just want to acknowledge that we do have a development application in right now to build an industrial piece in the northern part of the concept plan area, and then, um, also, the residential piece is more towards the south, and again, I think there's a lot of steps that need to be had before that develops, like figuring out how infrastructure is going to get paid.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell, ask your question?
I have a question for Ms. Turway, she just represented that we have an industrial opportunity there, what number of jobs, since you mentioned it, what number of jobs does that represent, potential to provide?
Christina, do you know, uh, Christina's working on the developments, more by square footage, they don't, we don't require the number of jobs in planning applications.
Okay, what's the square footage of the facility?
I can take a look, I know it's an office of fifty spaces, but give me one moment, I can look.
Is that private or public?
Uh, the city is not building it, it's a private development that is building it, and it's...
I take it you have a point to make here?
There will be. I believe it's for Clackamas County, so I just want to be clear, that I believe this, this is for a public institution, is my understanding.
Is that correct, Ms. Rob Skater?
That's correct, it's a spec development that Clackamas County is looking at acquiring.
Okay.
Well, I would simply say that if I could control the sequence of build, and get employment opportunities, and provide the optimum, which is to live here and then work here and walk across the street and go to work, that would be my preference, I don't know if I can legally do that, and, um, apparently, nobody does at this point in time.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else, Commissioner McGriff?
Uh, yes, thank you Mayor, uh, I want to, uh, support what Commissioner O'Donnell said about the sequence of development. When that property was brought into the city many years ago, there was, there were very high hopes for the campus industrial development to take off. Unfortunately, we had the recession, and some other economic down... Unfortunately, we had the recession and some other economic downturns, which did not allow for that to happen. But I am hopeful that, that we will succeed in that. And obviously, we don't have to totally wait for our economic development plan to get done, because we have an idea already of what we'd like to see there. And I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell that the sequence of development is really critical, that we get the jobs in place first before we start looking at how we're going to extend infrastructure to residential development, which we do need, but not as badly as we do need the jobs. So, I concur with you. And if Mr. Kabizman has a way to research that for us, to give us some tools that we can do, that would be fantastic.
Ms. Riggs, who has the control of the screen?
I do.
Can you run back one slide, please? Is that it? So, what do we have last time that we're supposed to be talking about this time?
Included in the packet, so last time, the commission opened up the record, we accepted testimony that was related to utilities. And so, the city has placed in the record a memorandum that identifies how we believe the code has been met, as well as acknowledges the water issue that we were referring to earlier. In addition, there's a memo that was submitted today from the Natural Resources Committee that highlights their importance of the upland habitat areas. And because of that, we've also included a revised ordinance that adds an additional language to support retention of upland habitat, but it doesn't change the text of the concept plan implementation or the code to actually require that the upland habitat be maintained.
Okay. Questions? So, what's the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Question from Ms. Turway. So, what is the effect of that statement? Is it, has no mandate, it's simply, we would look upon it with favor if you would do this?
Yes, I think it shows clear policy, direction and intentions of the commission to identify the priority that that habitat be maintained. But it does not require, correct.
Then our next steps would be?
So, yeah, the city commission can choose to adopt this. If the commission is interested in coming up with language that does require them to maintain habitat, then you would want to direct staff to go back and write that. There is no way where we can just amend existing overlay districts to include habitat protection for those areas. We have some layers of protection when development occurs, that slice of window for the residential side. For the commercial side, we have tree mitigation requirements, but we don't have the level of habitat protection that the Natural Resources Committee is asking for.
Okay. What's the pledge of the commission? Commissioner McGriff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd like us to move forward with at least this small step of the, to begin to get there. I think it's critical that we maintain the habitat in this area and we have experts on our Natural Resource Committee that have been telling us this. And I really think that if they didn't feel very strongly about it, it wouldn't be in here. So, I, I concur with their findings. And I'd like to see us move ahead with this adoption, or at least the first reading of, of the ordinance, so that we can move forward. I know that staff has a very heavy workload coming up with the conference of plan update, but maybe in terms of this comp plan, we can come up with, staff can work to come up with some simple interim language that we could adopt within the next two to three months to get this protected and then refine it as we go through the comp plan process. So, I'm hoping that my-
So, the motion is first reading?
Yes.
Is there a second?
You have a public testimony?
Oh, it is a public hearing.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, well, sorry.
Do we have any public testimony?
There, there is no public testimony on this.
All right. Then I'll close the public hearing.
Wait, hold on, did you have something?
Can I just seek some clarification on the writing additional language?
Oh.
I would just want to ask our city attorney if we need to keep open the notice that we've sent, the Measure 56 notice.
To the extent we're going to make additional-
Do you want me to clarify? I wanted to get this adopted. And then, after we've done the second reading, continue to work towards getting some language that we could adopt in addition, in a later date, within the next few months, that something simple that covers this so that we can have something in place interim till we get to the comp plan process where we're going to update it and really make it bigger.
I'm not confident in our ability to do that interim measure, because we would want to re-notice the people, to tell them that there would be new provisions in place for protection for Measure 56 notice.
Then we do what we need to do.
And then, we would have to work through, I would, I would suggest we work through Natural Resources Committee and Planning Commission to get a code that's good. So, I think it will be a little bit complicated, because we're inventing a new overlay district. And I don't foresee us being able to accomplish that in the next couple of months.
I'm confident that one of our other sister, brother jurisdictions has already done something that we could look at to use as a model to jumpstart it. We're not reinventing the wheel. I know somebody's already done this. I don't know who, but somebody out there probably has. We can take a look at it. I'm just saying we need to look at it and see, see what your assessment is.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Do you want me to remake it, since we had closed the public hearing?
No, we know what it is.
Okay.
I don't know what it is.
The motion, the motion is, on the floor, is to approve the first reading. And all the rest of that stuff is ancillary to that.
Right.
So, it's just-
So, my understanding, my understanding of the motion was that we're prepared to proceed, but at some point, prior to final approval, we would like to see a definition that meets these standards like Commissioner McGriff was speaking about.
Nope.
He disagrees with you.
Okay, well, I just want to understand the motion.
No, that's fine.
Could, could we maybe have two separate discussions? One would be a motion to adopt the first reading.
Yes, which is what I made.
And then, we'll, we'll figure out where that lands. And then, if we want to revisit Commissioner McGriff's direction, I think that would be helpful for staff.
So, once again, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, it's moved to second. Is there further discussion? Call or roll, please.
Uh, we have the first reading on, there is a change to the ordinance. So, it's ordinance number 20-106, an ordinance of the City of Oregon, City amending the Oregon City Municipal Code Title 16 Land Divisions, Title 17 Zoning, Chapter 17.06.020, official zoning map, the official conference plan map and amending the ancillary documents of the conference plan to implement the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. In addition, there was a change from the ordinance as it was posted. And I'll read that change out loud. It's adding an additional recital that provides as follows. Whereas large intact areas of forest contribute to plant and animal species diversity, help remove pollutants from the air, mitigate climate change and protect water quality. The city commission supports preservation of upland habitat areas as recommended by the Natural Resources Committee, which may be supported through tools within the municipal code, such as density transfers, preservation tracks, master planning and other incentives, and-
Thank you. Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye. So, I, I have to apologize for my lack of paying attention at the beginning of this meeting, but we have a fellow county staffer in the audience to, to come to 7D. And as we usually do, we have neighboring jurisdictions come and like to move that forward. I don't think it's going to take us very long.
Can I go ahead and make my second motion regarding the-
Oh, certainly, go ahead.
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Anyway, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to have the Natural Resources Committee work on some particular code language to help us protect upland habitat areas.
Can I just add to that?
Yes.
That I do not believe I have the staff capacity to do that in the timeframe that you previously identified, because we've already started the comp plan. And to get through all the committees, I think will take more than three months.
Well, I would say do the best you can. And I know that they would be interested in working on it. And there, there's experts on that group that may not need a lot of staff direction, could come up with something that you guys could use or take a look at.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Does the motion include a timeframe?
Not at this point. I want, I'd like to have the Natural Resources talk to staff about what they think it would take, but at least give them the direction to start looking at something.
Are you suggesting we hold off the second reading?
No. This isn't a, this is a work item for the Natural Resources Committee, since they are very passionate about this.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for purposes of the vote.
Okay. Been moved and seconded for discussion? Call or roll?
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye. So, back to where I was. It's been our practice for as long as I've been mayor and since before, that if we have another jurisdiction in a meeting, that we try to get them out of here as soon as possible. So, I'm going to move 7D, 20-031. Yes.
Um, also been our practice, if we have an extremely large turnout of people that want to speak from the public, which we have close to 50 or 60 people standing outside waiting to speak on an agenda item before this, the item that you're speaking about has been brought to us two times already.
Which, which, why assume that it's not going to take us very long to deal with it?
I would not support that moving that item forward. I would go with the current agenda.
There's- Or Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry. What?
I think you probably need-
Is Mr. Lewis here?
Yes, he's on Zoom. He's on Zoom.
Think under the, under the rules, right? Commissioner can appeal the decision of the, of the mayor's decision in this issue. And so, if there's a question about the agenda order, the commissioner has a right to, and you have a language specifically.
Yeah. So, under the rules of procedure adopted by the commission, the presiding officer shall assert to determine the order of business under the rules of the commission. However, any commission member shall have the ability to appeal. And if, in fact, there is an appeal that is seconded, the, the question for, before the commission is, shall the action proposed by the presiding officer be sustained?
So, you're appealing?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Hey, is it debatable?
Uh, it, let me double check. I don't believe it is, but, um.
Well, he's looking that up. Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Could you stand by one?
Just, do we think this is going to take till eight?
I do.
What, this?
Yeah.
Actually, I don't, because I think that we haven't gotten the information we asked for from Wes.
Okay.
That's why, that's the point I was trying to make, if you'd listened long enough.
Well, I had a meeting with them on Monday. And so, I've had more meetings on this topic than you have. And so, I know where we're at and I want to talk about it. So, it's going to take longer than 10 minutes.
Um, it is debatable.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call or roll?
How's the question phrase?
So, the question is, should the- The, the idea is, we're not, if you vote yes, we're not changing the order of the agenda.
Okay. Uh, actually, the question is, shall the action proposed by the presiding officer be sustained? If you vote yes-
Oh, I'm sorry.
The, the action of the presiding officer is sustained and we move to Wes. If you vote no, the, we don't change the order. Or the agenda is followed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Now that you've just said that, I just-
So, you're voting whether the action of the mayor should be sustained. In other words, if you vote yes, Wes is next. If you vote no, the agenda is followed.
Going to vote no.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
No.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
No.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
No.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Yes. Motion is not carried. So, we're on to agenda item 7A, 20-330, City Commission Obstance to Address Concerns About the Action of the Mayor. Mr. Conkle?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Evening, Commissioners. Uh, the City Commission has expressed concerns regarding recent actions of the mayor, including his comments and efforts on reopening the city after the pandemic shutdown, which resulted in a letter from the Oregon Department of Justice, and his comments on the significance of police brutality against black people. The commission is also concerned about the mayor's private direction to the audiovisual technician during the break of the June 3, 2020 City Commission meeting to immediately turn off the audio and video feed when he adjourned the City Commission meeting, contrary to the adopted commission agenda and depriving the commission members the ability to speak on a matter of local, state and national importance. As a result, the commission asked for an exploration of potential actions the commission could take to address its concerns. The city's attorney has prepared a memorandum, which is attached to the staff report, outlining the potential actions available to the commission. The memorandum is not intended to document or identify any particular transgression, but to provide an explanation of potential action the commission could take to address actions of one of the members. Commissioner O'Donnell also requested that the information provided by Jesse Buss in an email dated June 17th, I'm sorry, that's not the right date.
16th.
June 16th, which outlined a vote to censure or a vote of no confidence under Roberts Rules of Order, the appointment of a special investigator, referral to the Clackamas County District Attorney, Clackamas County Sheriff, and/or the Attorney General, referral to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. And that attachment was included on the information that was updated by Ms. Riggs.
Thank you. How do you want to proceed? You want to take public comment first?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Then we'll proceed to public comment. My machine. Paul Edgar and Patty Webb?
Uh, let's just start, we're doing one at a time, so.
Okay, Paul Edgar.
Thank you, City. Thank you, City. City Commission, this is Paul Edgar. I'm a citizen of Oregon City. The reason why I just want to make a comment is that we have to have confidence in the mayor and in the agenda and what the, what is being said and done. And if that confidence becomes questionable, then all of a sudden, a, a lot of dominos fall. And I'm concerned right now that dominos have been falling. And I think, and I hope, that we can all pull it together and I don't want to make a recommendation as to what action should be taken. I hope that the mayor figures out what's best. And I just know that I live here. I plan to live for the rest of my life here in Oregon City. And this is, I care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Patty Webb live?
Uh, no, Patty Webb is waiting right there. So, when Paul leaves the room, Patty will come in. Come on.
All right.
Come on, Dan.
Hello, my name is Patty Webb and I live in Kanema. I'm going to try to make this really quick. In a public tort claim, there are more than one. Dan Holliday is alleged to have asked for a bribe regarding the Cove Project. This is a blatant violation of state ethics by a public official. VOC Charter, Section 13, Qualifications of Officers, there is a recite, a residency requirement for the Oregon City Mayor. What is Dan Holliday's current address? Where does he live? Dan Holliday acted alone without informing the other commissioners when he solicited money for fireworks for an event that most likely won't happen. Where is that money now? Did he promise anything for it in return? This should be enough for a no-confidence vote from the city commissioners. If not, why not? Now, Dan Holliday has embarrassed and enraged the people of Oregon City with his ignorant racist statements. He wants to jump back and forth between being a mayor and a private citizen. Either way, it's an exposure of what kind of person he is, the kind we don't want as mayor, the kind we have no confidence in, the kind we want out of our government. It's time for Dan Holliday to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, let me answer the one question. I live at 463 Mountain View, where I've lived ever since I became mayor.
And that's your address of record officially?
It is, and it's been confirmed by Ms. Riggs on a number of occasions.
Good to know. You might want to let them know about that.
Since you drove by my house the other day, you know that.
I have just as much right to drive by your house as you drive by mine all the time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next is Kylie Manning.
Yeah, she's coming from outside.
Okay.
So, we're going to filter them in, one at a time.
Ms. Manning, if you'd state your name and city of residence for record, please.
Okay. Uh, my name is Kylie Manning, and I live in Oregon City in the South End area. Um, I am half Asian and half black, which has made it very hard to live in Oregon City. As you know, Oregon City is a predominantly white town, which has made it hard for me to feel comfortable in my own skin. I grew up hearing many racial slurs and jokes that were directed towards me. For example, in sixth grade, a girl had invited me to her birthday party, and the boy next to me said, "Are you sure you want to go, Kylie? The cops might show up." The boy did not get in trouble, he was just told to stop while he sat there crying. I know that many other young children and other black people of color that live in Oregon City are experiencing the same thing I did, and that really hurts my heart. Mr. Holliday, please recognize that your POC community is already feeling unequal, and instead of looking at the perspective of everyone is to, um, perspective of everyone is to equal recognize that others have struggles that need more attention and effort put behind them to resolve. You have made a comment that you do not have black, white, Asian, Hispanic, gay, straight, or any other non-community members, and that you only have Oregon City members, and you support all of them equally. This is equivalent to saying all lives matter, and they do, but not until Black Lives Matter. The comment had made me very upset, especially because I am a woman of color. And to finish up, I just wanted to, um, thank everyone who went to the protest here in Oregon City at the library, and made me very happy to know that there are good people that support Black Lives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie.
Next, we have Chloe Manning. Hi, Ms. Manning. Will you state your name and, uh, city of residence for the record, please?
I'm Chloe Manning and Oregon City in the South End neighborhood. Okay. Dan Holliday, the mayor of Oregon City, stated, "I do not have black, white, Hispanic, gay, straight, or any other non-community members. I only have Oregon City community members, and I support all of them equally. But as a black member of this community, what you said truly upsets me. I get that you are trying to support everybody equally right now, but before everybody's supported equally, Black Lives need to matter to everybody. As the mayor, it is your responsibility to see what is going on in your community right now. You need to be able to see how black people are being treated in your community, so that you can understand that black people have never been treated the same as white people. You can't say that you don't have black, white, gay, Hispanic, or straight commu- straight community members, and also say that you are treating everyone equally. Because by saying that, you are saying that everyone has the same struggles, and that we all go through the same things, which is not the case at all. I hope that by listening to everyone speak today, you get more of an understanding of why everyone is mad about your only Oregon City community members comment. Thank you."
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to butcher this name, it's just.
Yep, bring her on in.
If you could state your, uh, name and, uh, city of residence for the record, please.
Oh, go ahead and sit down. Go ahead and write. Uh, if you would like to submit one, sure. Thank you.
Um, I'm Aviana Polero. I'm a sixteen-year-old going into my junior year at Oregon City High School, and I live in the Gaffney Lane Residence Area. I've dedicated myself to speaking out and advocating for equal human rights and injustices that are currently and always have been taking place in not only our country, but our community as well. As an ally for people of color and minorities, I recognize that it's my responsibility to not only acknowledge my privilege, but use it in a beneficial way. I also recognize how powerful young voices are, and how crucial it is that they are heard and taken seriously. That's why I'm here today to address the issues surrounding our current mayor. Mayor Holliday has an alarming history of downplaying women's credibility when it comes to things such as the Me Too movement, as well as downplaying people of color's voices in the Black Lives Matter movement as a whole. He's been known to become defensive and act in disbelief when people have a different opinion than him, or attempt to speak out against him like I am doing today. For example, he denies people the right to join citizens committees if they are known to have a history of disagreeing with him and his thoughts and opinions. He often finds ways to personally attack those who do not agree with him, and frequently chooses to turn a blind eye to predominant issues if they do not align with his views. The mayor chooses to be vocal on social media in damaging ways such as posting hashtag not me too in response to a Me Too movement post. As a young woman who has been sexually assaulted and ridiculed for speaking out, hearing my own mayor say such a thing is repulsive and frightening. I'm a board member for a nonprofit organization called CTF Care, Continued Fine Kindness. We travel to local schools and discuss anti-bullying with young students through presentations, and the behavior Mayor Holliday has openly displayed to his coworkers and members of the community are shockingly similar to the behaviors of a middle school bully. This is yet another reason why he's not fit for this position. Mayor Holliday has recently been seeing downplay in the current Black Lives Matter movement, saying that it is heartily an epidemic over social media platform. Our mayor is supposed to be a leader, somebody that the people in our community can turn to in these difficult times, but instead, he's chosen to become closed-minded and ignorant, saying things that are severely inconsiderate to the black community. It should not be a person of color's jobs who have to constantly educate white people, especially a person in power such as the mayor. I hope that he can acknowledge the fact that he, along with other, every other white person, will never understand how it feels to be black in America. I highly suggest that he take time to educate himself, listen to the black community and what they need from him as an ally, and recognize his privilege. We will never understand how it feels to be discriminated against. We will never understand how it feels to be racially profiled or stereotyped or murdered for our skin color. He will never understand, however, he must take a stand. Dan Holliday, if there's anything you can take away from today, I hope it's a fact you need to look in the mirror and check your privilege and find ways to stop abusing your power. Our generation is ready for change, however, it's people like you who are holding us back. All of our eyes are on you, and you must do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Roberts.
She's next.
You state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
My name is Amy Roberts, and I live in Oregon City in the neighborhood of Hillendale.
Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Amy Roberts. I have lived in Oregon for over thirty years. My family and I moved to Oregon City in two thousand fourteen. My husband and I both work in Clackamas County, and our daughter attends school in Oregon City. I've taken the time to come to the city commission meeting to add my voice to the growing number of community members expressing dismay at the unethical, abusive, and unfit behavior that Mayor Dan Holliday has exacted upon Oregon City. To be elected to a city office, whether paid or volunteer, is an important part of our American democracy. Just as we teach our children to be honest, respectful, and ethical, we also expect our elected leaders in government to be the same. Why? Because all of us Americans live by a social contract, community members obeying the laws, giving our neighbors respect, and entrusting our tax dollars to be spent ethically by our elected leaders. So, what do we have here in Oregon City? We have a mayor who routinely lashes out at private citizens with rude, ignorant comments, and as a result, our community is wounded and has lost the trust that we placed in him. We have a mayor whose interactions with city employees, elected officials, and neighboring cities are again rude and ignorant, but are also compounded by unethical requests that show his willingness to bend the law for his own personal gain. Finally, we have a mayor who is not interested in providing effective leadership during these turbulent social and economic times. His apathy, which pervades the spirit of our beloved Oregon City, is preventing community building and economic development. For the good of our city, it is time for Mayor Dan Holliday to resign from office. But since waiting for him to take responsibility for his actions is most likely futile, I will be actively supporting any efforts made to recall Mayor Holliday. And to the community members watching and listening to the city commission meeting, please take a moment to really think about who you want to represent your city. Do you want a mayor that is honest, respectful, and ethical? Do you want a mayor that reflects Oregon City's values and historic importance? Do you want a mayor who is willing to represent every citizen? Then exercise the right to vote in November twenty twenty, when a recall petition of Mayor Dan Holliday is on the ballot. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Shanda Hall.
She'll be right there.
Okay.
All the way up here to the mic. It's your turn.
Just state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Hello, again. I'm Shanda Hall, Oregon City. Um, I wanted to give a little glimpse into my gratitude practice, because I've been doing that because coronavirus, and it sounded super healthy, so that's what I did. Um, so today's gratitudes, number one on my list today, is I'm thankful for my right to speak out freely as an American. I take that very seriously. Um, number two, I am grateful to Victoria Taft. When I attended the June seventh emergency city commissioner meeting, I was fascinated that the first voice we heard was someone from California named Victoria Taft. I was fascinated, and it started me wondering, why was this California-based conservative blogger calling into this Oregon City Commissioner meeting with no ties to our community? I also wondered, who was this enraged mob to whom you should not bend a knee, Mr. Mayor? Number three, who was in danger of losing their job? Turns out it was you, Mr. Mayor. Your job is at stake, because you serve at the pleasure of us, your constituents. Turns out there is an entire laundry list of reasons why you should lose your job, which I had no idea of, only one of which was your very visible refusal to sign a fairly innocuous letter condemning the killing of George Floyd. Who knew? Turns out there are thousands of citizens now who have a problem with your actions, ranging from cronyism to intimidation to misogyny to belittling people to things that smell kind of like fraud and kind of like racism, to messing with audiovisual feeds of an official meeting. Discovering all of this has been at times fascinating and horrifying, but it has been energizing. So, thank you, Victoria Taft, for starting me wondering about all these things, and for reminding us that this is a quote, "It is time to unite and not divide," and that indeed, there is a job at stake in our mostly dreamy burg, as she described Oregon City. I want to thank Victoria Taft publicly for reminding me too that words have power. She used the word mob ten times to describe the citizens of Oregon City. In the article she wrote after the June seventh meeting, ten times, that's how we were described as a mob. We are a lot of things, fed up, tired, frustrated, worried, but we are not a mob. And when that inaccurate, dumbed-down rhetoric is deployed, it gives us a sense of the mentality of your supporters, Mr. Mayor. That's really unfortunate. So, here we are, as I promised back on June seventh, showing up and paying attention, because now we know and we can't unknow. We will not stop speaking, emailing, calling, showing up, and organizing until we have a leader fit for office, and we're old-fashioned on our mostly dreamy burg that way. I promise we will not stop, and I promise that we can outlast you, and I promise that we can find a better leader. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking you to please resign. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Melissa Harrison. You state your name and, uh, city of residence for record, please.
I'm Melissa Harrison, and I live in Clackamas. I'm here because my students, um, live in this community, and they're important to me. Um, I'm one of the art teachers at the high school. I was brought on board because of my stance on equity and the professional and personal work I have done to promote justice for marginalized groups of people. I teach a curriculum reflective of cultural responsive and sustaining breast practices that I researched at PSU while getting my master's degree last year. None of my work has ever been about me, and I'm sharing this with you to show how much I, along with my colleagues, are doing to create schools that are resilient, equitable, and inclusive of black and brown students, who have traditionally in education been marginalized and underserved, and to be honest, because we love our students and want them to be successful and healthy. Our students will be wholesome, positive, and productive citizens of Oregon City and beyond when they're included by seeing people who look like them in positions of power, when they are valued by all citizens of their city, and when they can work through differences and respect each other for what each of them bring to the table as individuals reflective of their unique families, neighborhoods, and cultures. However, they need such practices to be modeled by their leaders in the classroom, as well as leaders of their community. I'm held accountable for best practices in my field according to my study at PSU, social justice standards, the National Art Education standards, as well as evaluations done by my administrator. These best practices, standards, and evaluations demand that I hold myself accountable for creating equitable learning opportunities, an equitable environment, positive and equitable classroom talk that fosters the growth and inclusion of my diverse learners. I'm asking that my student city leaders also be accountable to them and their families by modeling inclusive practices while governing in personal and professional dialogue, and when making governing decisions and policies that affect their community. Thank you for your time. It's much appreciated, much, sorry, appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Derek Kramer.
It's Dara.
You state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Derek Kramer, and I've been living in the Caulfield neighborhood of Oregon City for nineteen years, and I've been teaching here in Oregon City that time too. Uh, thank you for allowing this time, uh, to listen to your community. During the June third commission meeting, the mayor said he refused to sign a resolution condemning systemic racism that every other mayor in his consortium signed, because he does not believe that local government can do anything to impact issues like this. But if you listen to every civil rights leader in our country right now, they are saying the exact opposite. They say this works from the ground up and to start locally. Teachers in Oregon City address racism regularly. We're expected to have a clear stance with a specific plan to address it. I would expect the same from local government. Here are a few examples I've addressed as a teacher. Students chanting "Build the Wall" at Latinx students. Students playing a game at lunch that they had named "The Racist Game," where white boys would chase down Latino boys, pretend to handcuff them as ICE officers, and tell them they were going to be sent back to where they came from. A black student telling me that she doesn't even bother reporting it when she's called the N-word, because she believes it won't ever stop. A black student crying and not wanting to come into my class because another girl kept telling her that her hair was nappy and smelled so bad it made her want to puke. So, when I hear the mayor say that there's nothing that a city government can do to address systemic racism in our community, I'm deeply saddened. During the June seventh meeting to discuss his recent actions and comments, the mayor up and left the meeting right before the first ever non-white commissioner in our city's history was about to share her thoughts. When she asked if he even wanted to hear what the commissioners had to say, he said he'd see it in the recording. His actions speak volumes. And this is just one part of our community's concern. If we're expected as teachers to teach honesty, integrity, cooperation, active listening skills, and compassion to our students, how can we hold them to these standards when they could easily point out that the mayor of our city possesses none of these traits in his leadership? For these reasons and many more, I ask that the mayor resigns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Marle. Come up to the mic and state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Mayor Holliday. Members of the city commission, for the record, my name is Adam Marle, and I'm a lifelong resident of Oregon City and an OCHS alumnus. I also happen to be a registered Republican who voted for the first time in twenty eighteen to reelect Dan Holliday. The reason I say this is to counter the narrative that the only people who take issue with the words and actions of our mayor are a vocal minority of politically-minded actors. When I attended OCHS, there were several racially charged events that revealed just how much further we have to go in order to fulfill our nation's promises of liberty and justice for all. Indeed, a quick Google search of the words Oregon City High School racism will yield more than enough results for someone to make up their mind about our own community's issues with racism. Needless to say, growing up as a person of color in our white suburban bubble has not been easy. Despite these issues, I have remained optimistic for our city. That optimism was quickly diminished when I read that the only metro-area mayor who did not sign the letter standing in solidarity with the black community was my own. These past few months have made it abundantly clear that the leader of our city is unfit to continue in his current capacity as mayor. Instead of leading us through a pandemic, he has led us to the precipice of a legal fight with state officials over reopening. Instead of attempting to unify the community in the midst of a national reckoning over- race relations, he has attempted to circumvent his fellow city commissioners in procuring funds for a fireworks show. Instead of affirming his commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, he has affirmed his commitment to shutting down thoughtful dialogue between his colleagues and constituents who would dare disagree with him. Nobody is perfect, but the distinguishing, uh, quality of a good leader is the ability to recognize one's faults, apologize, and then move on. Mayor Holliday has done none of these. Now, I do not believe that elected officials should resign or be recalled simply because of a disagreement on the issues, but unfortunately, that does not describe this situation. Elected officials should be held accountable for manipulating the political process and demonstrating an unwillingness to do their job. The mayor has lost the faith of his constituents and his colleagues spanning the ideological spectrum. On June 9th, he did the right thing by voting in favor of Resolution 20-19. Now he should take the logical next step of putting those words into action. Mayor Holliday, you should resign.
Thanks, sir.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Luke Fowler. Name and city residence for the record, please.
Um, Elizabeth Fowler, and I live in the McLaughlin neighborhood. I'm personally disgusted by the recent public and silent commentary of Mayor Holliday. He was the only mayor in the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium not to sign the joint letter acknowledging that no community is immune to systemic and historic patterns of racial injustice. This, along with the recent social media comments after the murder of George Floyd, are shameful not only to himself, but for every citizen of this community, every city commissioner, every city employee, and unbecoming of a public servant. I know his statement does not represent me or the majority of the people I know in this community, but as elected official, his voice is amplified, and by sitting back and allowing it to go unchecked, we are all complicit. It is up to us to hold our leaders accountable. Mayor Holliday, your ignorant, racist, misogynistic, corrupt behavior will go unnoticed no longer. Your actions have shown your inability to prove the type of effective leadership our community deserves, especially during the current social and economic times. I stand with the other members of this community in calling for your resignation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, and I'll butcher that one too.
She's coming up next.
And, uh, state your name and city residence for the record, please.
My name is Nancy Slavin. I live in Oregon City in the Rivercrest neighborhood. I've lived in Oregon for twenty-nine years, and I appreciate the chance to speak in front of you. I've never spoken in front of a city commission before. My family and I moved to Clackamas County from the Oregon coast in 2015, and we bought a house in Oregon City in 2016. I have worked for the Oregon City Library, the Clackamas County Community College, and currently work in a nonprofit in Clackamas County. We have a daughter, my husband and I, in elementary school, and most summers, my niece comes to stay with us. I have helped care for my niece, who is Black and my sister's only child, since she was born. She's now eighteen and a beautiful young woman. I care very much about these kids, and my wish for them is that they know they can walk safely and freely in this town and elsewhere and be seen as the beautiful human beings that they are. Oregon City is a lovely town. It's the first city and the first main street west of the Rockies. But we also know that Oregon was founded as a white homeland, and Black people were not allowed to be here and/or they had to leave town by sundown. I worry about how Black, Indigenous peoples and all people of color, and you've certainly heard some of them speak today, other kids just like my niece, how they'll feel if leadership espouses incorrect information about the loss of Black lives, if the leadership appears callous, dismissive, walks out of tough conversations, and if our mayor refuses or willfully ignores the chance to sign on to the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium letter with acknowledgement and solidarity. Oregon City, as the first main street in the Northwest, has extra responsibility to be vocal, clear, outspoken, brave, in this moment and in this movement that is long overdue in our country, to create systems of true equity and inclusion for all. Even the Bible, Luke 12:48, says, "Whomsoever much is given, of him much shall be required." We pay taxes in the city, my family and I, and I'm adding my voice to the many that are out there to express my concerns about the behavior, ethics, and lack of accountability and transparency by Mayor Dan Holliday. I understand that the way those in power have always done things is changing, and that culture change might be frightening for some. But I believe we are living in a time where mutual care is the majority of citizens' primary concern, and the time has come for workplaces and churches and civic institutions at the federal and the local level especially to show our citizens and visitors that we don't simply tell them that they're created equal, we show them how they are in fact treated equal. And all evidence shows that the best way to do that is to have that leadership come from the top. Mayor Holliday has not shown publicly that kind of leadership. And my question for you, Mr. Mayor, is will you please resign?
Thank you. Jane Littlefield.
Thank you, Denise.
Hello. Thank you for being here tonight and for making space for public...
Ma'am?
Yes?
Could you state your name and city of residence for the record, please?
Sure can. Uh, thank you for making space for public comment. My name is Jane Littlefield. I live, work, spend money, volunteer, invest, and pay taxes in Oregon City. I live in the McLaughlin neighborhood. I am grateful for the leadership and dedication to equity, diversity, and inclusion of the commissioners. Thank you for your transparency, accountability, and responsive service to our community. You heard your community ask you to do something, and you immediately responded. Thank you for crafting and passing Resolution 20-19 declaring our city's stance against racism, discrimination, and social injustices in our country and community. Thank you for ensuring that we have a safe space for conversations, learning opportunities, and advancing policies and procedures to fight racism and inequity. I am disappointed by the unethical, unsanctioned leadership of and by the racist comments made by the mayor of Oregon City. Mayor Holliday brought shame to Oregon City through not signing the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium We Stand United letter. Mayor Holliday harmed Oregon City residents by using his social position, power, and platforms to share racist ideology. Mayor Holliday minimized Oregon City residents' experiences and the epidemic of systemic racism by prohibiting discussion of it at the June 3rd Commission Meeting. And these are just the injustices I've witnessed since I started paying closer attention to local politics two weeks ago. I am disappointed by the mayor's premeditated patterns of leaving meetings and trying to usurp accurate records of commissioner comments. That is terrible leadership and abusive power, and frankly, it would be laughably childish conduct if it wasn't so harmful to democracy and the people of Oregon City. Oregon City demands better from its mayor. I am ashamed of you as a public servant, Mayor Holliday. My expectation of you as my mayor is that you will take this feedback, reflect upon it, recognize that you need to educate yourself and do way better to serve your constituents, and then follow through with transparent and measurable actions. If you are unable to commit to that, then I respectfully ask you to resign as mayor of my city. Commissioners Denise McGriff, Rocky Smith Jr., Rachel Lyle Smith, Frank O'Donnell, rock on, Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Stenson.
My name is Amber Stenson, and I am an Oregon City resident.
Thank you, ma'am.
In the Maple Lane, Holly Lane area. Most people know me as Amber Rae. My family moved to this area when I was seven years old, and I've been a part of this community for forty-five years. My kids went to Oregon City schools. I helped manage my family's small business in Beaver Creek. I purchased and sold many homes in Oregon City, and I now work two miles from my home in Oregon City. Six years ago, I created the Facebook group Oregon City Chit Chat. I was expecting a small community gathering of local residents who would share local events, maybe a recipe or two, and when potatoes were on sale at grocery outlet. Peace, Dan Mills. The membership grows to nearly twenty-nine thousand members. I would imagine we will crest that tonight, but I've always kept the rules the same. My choice to avoid politics in Oregon City Chit Chat was a disservice to the Oregon City community. The members rely on the group to find the latest information. I had a belief system that our local government must be for our best interest since we were the ones who voted for them. However, this is changing, and my eyes have opened, and most of the city has paying, is paying more attention now than they ever have. Community involvement will be the forefront of our group now. Where can you find local events as your city commission meeting I am sitting in right now? Ways to volunteer your time, donate your resources, shop locally, and support our local schools. Community involvement does include politics as defined by the activities associated with the governance of a country or other area. Mayor Holliday, on June 5th, I offered you a form to issue an informal statement about your words on the Nextdoor app about Black Lives Matter. Instead of making a statement, you responded to me, and I quote, "I made my statement by leaving the group, and I won't be a part of something where you don't follow your own rules. It's been an interesting experience." Oh, and I did report the group." Unquote. Yes, Mayor Holliday, it has been an interesting experience. As detailed in Oregon City Municipal Charter and Code, before entering upon the duties of his office, each officer shall take an oath or shall affirm that he will support the constitutions and laws of the United States and of Oregon, and he will faithfully perform the duties of his office. Mayor Holliday, it appears you don't follow your own rules that you raised your hand on January 2nd, 2019 to uphold, and you have been reported. Thank you.
Thank you. Shamara Lex. You state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Uh, Shamara Lennox, Gresham, Oregon. Um, so I know we are not doing dialogue. Um, I do have a few questions that can be answered later, and I'm also going to be stating some statements. So, first one is letting somebody like Dan Holliday represent Oregon City, how do you think that makes the city look as a whole? Um, what is going to be the new standard so issues like this don't happen? And can we tighten up on background check procedures so we can spot the racist people before they come into office? Um, now into statements, Denise McGriff asked a question, this is a quote, "You're not interested in what the rest of us have to say?" And Dan Holliday responded saying, "I'll hear what the rest of you have to, have to say on the recording." That can come off as really disrespectful, especially being a person of color. After the statements you made on Facebook, I feel like they go hand-in-hand with how you spoke on Facebook, shows that you lack respect for people of color, and you are not fit to be in charge of a city. Um, you also made a, you also made a statement on Facebook for the Sandy protest, saying good luck trying that out in Sandy, which can be implied that, you know, you meant that you want them to act out in violence because everything that was promoted was peaceful, speaking like that shouldn't ever be tolerated, especially if you're in position of power like the mayor's. Thank you.
Thank you. Jalen Welch. State your name and city residence for the record, please.
My name is Jalen Welch, and I currently reside in Gresham, Oregon. And, um, just the fact that the mayor was able to make the comments he made and say everything he said on Facebook is absolutely ridiculous. And it's, it raises the question, like he just said, how does that represent Oregon City as a whole and the community by itself? And, you know, you shouldn't have somebody in a power position like that if they don't treat everybody the same and equally, because I know there's African-American, African-Americans in Oregon City as a whole, so it's just ridiculous, and he, I don't think he's fit for that. And last thing I got to say is Black Lives Matter.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Betty Mum, Commissioner Mum?
I was listening. I, I love it when our citizens get involved.
Name and city residence for the record, please.
Betty Mum, Oregon City. Disclaimer, I live with the mayor, his words are his, my words are mine, he does not speak for me, I don't speak for him. And I've been involved in politics in Oregon City for thirty years, elected to the commission in 2010. Tonight I have to say, tonight's, today's climate, in today's climate, you can barely say anything without offending or insulting someone, and it's sad. Right now, everyone is angry, including all of you. When you're angry, this is not a good time to make an important decision. The thought, we've had mayors, commissioners, planning commissioners, HRB members, CIC members go down their own path and do what they're gonna do, and we will have it again, and I'm sorry for that. Maybe you don't care about the past, maybe you don't care about the present, I think that's very short-sighted of you. And I would, um, like to say that your decision that you make tonight is going to be used in the future. And, um, Commissioner McGriff, if I did mishear what you said at that meeting, I apologize, but, um, you might want to listen to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Brady.
Okay, Matthew Brady is on the phone, so I will go ahead and unmute his phone now, and he can begin with stating his first and last name and city of residency for the record.
My name is Matt Brady. I'm a resident of Oregon City. I'm here to add my voice to the chorus of voices calling for Mayor Holliday to step down or be recalled. My wife and I moved to Oregon City two years ago and shortly thereafter became aware of the mayor's sexist, obnoxious, and at times outlandishly juvenile interactions with his constituents on social media. We also became aware of his lack of professionalism in dealing with the city commission and his lapses in ethics. Frankly, it made us wonder where on earth we had landed ourselves. Fortunately, we discovered Oregon City to be filled with welcoming, gracious people, most of whom, until recently, knew nothing about the mayor or his behaviors. Recently, the mayor made comments attempting to twist statistics to deny the reality that young Black men are killed by police at disproportionately higher rates than whites. He has subsequently refused to apologize for or even to explain or cite sources for his comments, or for others that he's made denying or making light of systemic racism, police brutality, and the movement against it. Instead, he has clumsily and somewhat bizarrely attempted to link citizens exercising their First Amendment rights to criticize him to mobs and violence. He has also recently put public health at risk with his reckless actions during the COVID-19 pandemic. Now that the mayor's recent and historical words, actions, and behaviors are more widely known, I fear that people will be unwilling to move to or open or patronize businesses in Oregon City. I don't believe that the mayor has displayed the ability to process facts or perspectives that diverge from his own, and his leadership is damaging to the city and that he should step down or be removed from office. Thank you.
Thank you. Are the rest of them on the phone?
Yes.
So Angela Thomas is next.
So Angela Thomas, I have now unmuted your mic. You can go ahead and begin when you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Angela Thomas, and I have been a resident of Oregon City for over sixteen years. In a short time, I have read, listened, and learned about statements that Mayor Holliday has made that are concerning and disturbing for anyone, but especially someone in his position. There are a variety of issues, variety of issues I could talk about this evening, but since I have a short amount of time, I will focus on two. Mayor Holliday is on record as stating that... Mayor Holliday is on record as stating that local government can't do anything to impact racial justice. One of the problems with this statement is that for racial justice to be achieved within our nation, it must first be achieved on a local level. Instigating a change like this requires a leader that has the mentality and drive to be at the forefront of the movement. Dan Holliday is a perfect example of a leader that is unfit for current times. When people are wanting to see change and the leader or mayor in this instance does not believe it is possible, you enter into an area known in the mountain climbing world known as the death zone. If you stay too long, your cognitive abilities become significantly impaired and the mental repercussions are severe. Mayor Holliday, you've stayed too long and you are no longer equipped for your job. Social media is a great platform for connecting with others and it also provides a written record of a person's thoughts and beliefs. Mayor Holliday responded to another individual via social media who was asking for help in finding someone to clean their home. His response was, "Get a wife. Shame on you, Mayor Holliday, for making this statement. If you want to disrespect race, gender, religion, or sexual orientation, be my guest and then show yourself to the door. Do the right thing, Mayor Holliday, and step down from your, from your position. Oregon City and all the people of this great town deserve a mayor who is a true leader, one that supports, advocates, and speaks for all people. A mayor who strives for and believes passionately that inclusivity and equality are paramount. The people of Oregon City need a mayor who not only opposes discrimination of any kind, but who will fight for and work towards inclusivity by both their words and their actions. Thank you."
Thank you. And Jessica Palmer.
Jessica, I have unmuted your mic, so you can begin by stating your first and last name for the record and city of residency.
Thank you, am I coming in clear?
Yes, you are.
Okay, my name is Jessica Palmer, I live in Oregon City. Good evening, Oregon City Commissioners and Mayor. I am a lifelong resident, but since 2013, I have also owned a house in Oregon City. I consider this an investment I work hard for. I also consider my community to be an investment and always vote for the betterment of our city's schools, libraries, and welfare. The mayor's actions mentioned in staff report file number 20-330 have negative unwelcome effects, not just on the city council, but in return my financial investment in Oregon City and the programs that my tax dollars fund Oregon City with. The mayor's credibility as a leader of Oregon City is completely destroyed and he will only continue to hinder the city's reputation. He has tainted the good name of Oregon City Commission and has hampered their work. City Attorney Memorandum, June 11th, 2020, mentions that under Roberts Rules, Section 60, page 644, whether the bylaws make mention of it or not, an organization has the right to action against a member for conduct tending to injure the good name of the organization, disrupt its well-being, or hamper, hamper with its work. I urge that city council do as much as they can to protect our city's government and economy by the commission's application and enforcement against the mayor's application mentioned in the staff report. Unfortunately, those actions will not be enough to restore the credibility of the commissioners until the mayor decides to resign or is forced to be recalled. I have even witnessed the mayor outside of the staff report violation, Resolution Number 19-114C1, preservation of order that was effective May 1st, 2019, the use of unreasonable, loud disruptive, and profound language during the emergency special meeting, June 7th, 2020. That meeting, I also watched the mayor give out a personal phone number, name, and email of a person that sent him a complaint. If this is how the commission handles interactions with the public, to me, this is an invasion of privacy, which would be an offense to any reasonable person. This was an unnecessary, unprofessional way to undress the issue and an example of how the mayor's translation of dignity and respect needs to be addressed when the commissioners are enforcing any action towards the mayor. Dan Holliday, please resign so that the city of Oregon City may move forward with urgency in rebuilding the trust so desperately needed throughout our community and beyond. I thank the council for taking action within their power to restore what they can. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Is anybody else inside or out?
Uh, nope.
Okay, then we're gonna take a ten minute break and we'll come back and talk about
Well, first I want to say to everyone who came down here tonight, I appreciate your courage in coming forward. I know how difficult it is to get into a public forum and step up to that microphone. Um, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna ask the commission's permission to lead them through this discussion tonight. I do that because it's complex. This commission is gonna deal with four very specific issues. I will honestly say that I asked for Mr. Jesse Buss's memo to be included along with the city attorneys, because I think everyone, including the mayor and every commissioner and every citizen, needs to be aware of the possible consequences of what we're about to discuss. So I'll say this, I support every private citizen's right to voice his opinion, but, but, with public office comes public responsibility. And specifically, the office of the mayor is viewed as representing and portraying Oregon City to the rest of the world. So tonight, this committee, this commission is gonna review the actions of the mayor, and my hope is that we give direction to the city staff and clearly state our position. So contrary to what some, and they're primarily out of state, comments, I am confident, I'm confident that this commission will not react to what has been portrayed as an enraged mob, and I hardly view them as an enraged mob. I view them all as concerned citizens with the courage to stand up and speak. And I'll tell you this, I have thought long and hard on tonight's matter, and I do acknowledge Mayor Holliday's years of service. And it's unfortunate that tonight, we're gonna deal with, all of these actions of the past few months. So I actually came home and I watched the special meeting of June 7th, and I don't know what you saw, but I saw a commission and city staff that struggled with how to deal with this issue. And please give us some consideration. And I ask your understanding, you know, how often, in your memory, have the actions of any of your elected officials caused this degree of concern? So we're on, for most of us, uncharted territory. So the events, I need to break the events down into different categories because they require different solutions, and I'm gonna put forth, I'm gonna group them and then I'm gonna put them forth and I'll stop. I may make a motion and I may put it out for discussion with the commission. So the first two events, in my estimation, require an inquiry, whether you call it an inquiry or investigation, to establish the facts, what actually happened, not allegations, but hard evidence on two events. And those events specifically are promoting the reopening of Oregon City in defiance of the state orders. And yes, I know that it's been represented by the mayor, that it was just a conversation, but it's very easy to review the Canby Podcasts and the Lars Larson Show, two episodes, and I think that would shed light on the matter. But again, there's findings of fact here, not findings of law, findings of fact. The second one is, without participation or the consent of the commission, and using the Oregon City Office of the Economic Coordinator to arrange a meeting with a large Oregon City employer, and that employer is interested in expansion, and then either solicit, and this is to be determined by gathering of facts, either solicit or gather funds to stage a fireworks event in defiance of the state's order to remain closed through July 5th. Now, the motion I will make is very specific, and it's, you know, I will, this is the one motion I will make. I would like this commission to direct city staff to hire a private firm to investigate and publish facts surrounding the above two events that I just described, and those, that findings will be further reviewed by the appropriate agency. And that can be Oregon City Internal, Oregon Government Ethics Committee, or others as seen fit. That is my motion, and I open it up for discussion or vote by this commission.
Uh, I'm gonna make a statement.
Upon the conclusion of that, I'll go on to other issues.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a statement here, um...
I'll second the motion for discussion purposes.
Fine. Um, so, uh, I find myself, uh, one of the only two times in my career as mayor agreeing with Mr. Buss. So to be honest, I agree with everything he said in that, uh, email. I would welcome an ethics investigation, I would welcome, uh, a, uh, if, if you wanna refer to the, the Clackams County DA, um, I would welcome a, uh, an invest, a private investigation, whether, uh, you know, the only, uh, the only caveat I would put on that is I will not identify by name, um, the businesses that I talked to as far as the fireworks thing is concerned. I, I would certainly identify those folks to, uh, an investigator on the, uh, on, on the contingency that those folks not be named. What I did, what I talked to them about does not, uh, uh, deserve them being somehow financially impacted by, uh, whatever it is that, that we talked about. So with that, uh, I will relinquish the floor. Commissioner Smith.
Um, I think I would like to hear, go through all of the, um, topics before we kinda make a motion or decision on one, because I kinda wanna see, um, everyone's thoughts on how to address each one, so I think I wanna wait on that. But, um, as to the mayor's last comment about, um, the businesses, I understand that, however, you're the one that put those businesses in that situation. Um, that's your fault. Um, and so, um, you know, if you didn't want that to be public, then you should've kept your mouth shut.
So is your motion a second on the floor? For discussion? Commissioner McGriff, you have anything?
Nope.
Commissioner Lawrence Smith?
I don't have anything on this item.
Call roll.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
I wanted to wait, but still, I'll abstain.
Uh, Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
And Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye. Commissioner, uh, O'Donnell, you have the floor?
I'll continue. I do, and, and remember, one of the possible outcomes is the facts may exonerate the mayor, but that's what the investigation is for. Now, I'll move on, on to the matter of the social media statements made by the mayor on the death of black citizens in police encounters and the subject of racial injustice. Now, I don't feel that needs any investigation, because at a time when our citizens and people were looking for compassion, empathy, and humanity, the mayor posted statistics, followed by a statement that the loss of black lives was, quote, "Hardly an epidemic." So the question is, is that what we expect of, of our leadership? And to couple that action with us, our city, our mayor being the only mayor who declined to join other communities, other community mayors in denouncing racism. So in this matter, I place it in the hands of the commission for discussion. What is the impact of the mayor's actions and what should this commission do? And to guide that action, I'll refer to the memo published by our own city attorney, Carrie Richter. Do those actions meet the criteria for censure as outlined in the city attorney's memo? Have the mayor's actions, and the criteria, criteria is injured the good name of the Oregon City, disturbed its well-being, or hampered its work? And if so, censure is appropriate, according to the memo. And it can also include a vote of no confidence in the mayor's ability to continue to lead this city. That is the framework for a discussion, and I invite the commi, the commission to engage in that now or to defer until the final matters are presented.
What's Commissioner's preference? Looks like they want you to finish, Commissioner.
Yeah, I think...
The final item?
I was gonna say, I just think, I think Commissioner Smith has a preference to continue. I don't have a strong preference, so I, I'm fine with you continuing.
And I, I really guess I would also like to ask if I can, you know, after that, I can go back and change my vote from original thing. I wish we would've talked about this whole, in tot, you know, totality, so that I could've then made a decision about each of these without hearing what you're presenting. I, I don't know. So I, I, I regret that we made that vote on the first topic without really understanding the rest of it. So maybe at the end, I can go back and redo that if I feel, see if, I don't know what the legalities of that are.
You're welcome to change your voting anytime before the meeting adjourns. Commissioner O'Donnell?
The final item is, we need to consider the mayor's ac, mayor's action in a commission meeting where he, and again, this one I feel needs no investigation, because the, the facts are as they are, the witnesses are present in this room, are attending by Zoom tonight. Um, in this case, and then we also have an admission to a commissioner by the mayor that he did engage in the conduct of which we are about to discuss. And in this case, prior to the meeting, the mayor instructed the audiovisual tech to immediately discontinue audio and video recording of that meeting upon his dropping of the gavel, the traditional ending of a meeting. And that thereby summarily eliminated communications component of the agenda, which is one of those things where each commissioner gets their voice, expects their sentiments on any issue, and which in this case probably would've been the loss of black lives. Um, so by, in, forewent the communications component of the agenda, and it's particularly offensive only because in early in the meeting, he had denied fellow commissioners their right to speak. And I'm sure each commissioner felt, well, we can speak at the end of the meeting. So the commission operates under Roberts Rules of Order that lists censure as appropriate when, by, and I will quote from Roberts Rules of Order, "Arragation," which apparently just means arrogance, "arrogation or assumption by the presiding officer," which the mayor was the presiding officer, "of dictatorial powers, powers not conferred upon him by law, by which he harasses, embarrasses, and humiliates members, or specifically, as, as carries the number one, he refuses to recognize members entitled to the floor." And that is the end of the Roberts Rules of Order citation under which we order. That is the basis for the third and final subject of the commission discussion. I've got other comments to make that they're more general in nature, let me come back after we discuss the, the matters before the commission.
Who wants to go?
Oh, God.
Commissioner Smith?
First of all, I, I do wanna thank the public for coming out, all the people that stood outside and waited, um, for this topic to speak tonight. Um, I was so proud to see some of my students, um, some colleagues from the high school. Um, and, and I've been thinking about this a lot, too. Um, as someone that has worked in the public for a long, long time as a teacher, um, I know if certain of these things were something I did, I would've been fired. Um, and I think, you know, we have to think about that position that we have in the public, um, especially, um, in light of students and the community members that are seeing that. I, I can't believe we have sixteen-year-old students trying to teach the mayor how to behave. Um, it's sad, um, and for the comment earlier that we- Um, it's sad, um, and for the comment earlier that we're angry, we're not angry. We got over being angry a long time ago. This is not the mayor's first chance, or second chance, or third chance, or fourth chance, or tenth chance. Um, all of us have heard and seen his actions over the last long time, and I do have a bit of guilt, um, in not saying things in the past, um, about some of the things that he has said or done, um, and, you know, here we are. Um, and I, I really do believe that the mayor cares about this city. I do believe that. Um, and that's why I think he should resign. But he won't do that. Um, he'll never do that. Um, and that's really, you know, kind of really telling. Um, he's never apologized for any of his actions. You know, I've screwed up a lot on various things, and I tend to, you know, wait a week and apologize. I, I, that's one of the things that I do. I definitely, you know, think that we relook at things and how we do things and, and we, we, we try to do better. Um, we're not seeing that here. Um, and I think that's why we are so at loss a- as to how to move forward. Um, and putting staff in this position has been really dreadful, um, for us as a commission to see that, um, to have multiple special meetings where staff has to work entire weekends to prepare for it, where us as volunteer city commissioners have to spend our entire weekends, and that's been for the last several months to deal with this. So we're not angry. We're tired. We're exhausted. We're embarrassed. Um, and the question comes down to if we get to this Robert Rules of Order, and we use that as an example, um, has he, as mayor, injured the good name of this city? Absolutely. There's no doubt about that. Um, in hearing from the public walking around the, the last couple of weeks, how, how the current situation in this city has affected our business community, um, business recruitment, economic development, tourism, um, our police department, our, all of our departments, um, it has affected them greatly in a time that we have so much other things to worry about, so many other things to deal with. A pandemic, all the other issues going on, and yet we have to waste time on this. Did the mayor disturb the city's well-being? Absolutely. Did he hamper its work? Absolutely. And he did it tonight. Um, you know, the simple fact of trying to put something on the agenda, move forward to delay the public comment that had already been standing outside fifty people or more for an hour, that was deliberate. And it's disgusting. Mayor, we're gonna, you know, go through this. I believe that there should be an investigation. I'm glad that you concede to that. Um, and I would change my vote on that hopefully at the end of the meeting, um, or the end of this topic. I, I agree with most of the other comments about how to move forward, but I also wanna make a comment about the last meeting that we had where we, um, approved that resolution. We approved a resolution in a special meeting, um, twenty-nine nineteen, declaring Oregon City's stance against racism, discrimination, social injustice in our country and our community. But we did that before we know what the, what the vote was gonna be. Now, remember, the mayor had an opportunity to sign an equally important letter by all the mayors in the region. He refused to do that. We go back to our special meeting in April, also on a Sunday, as, you know, our June seventh meeting and so, and, uh, was. We were dealing with the executive order and a letter from the Attorney General of the actions of the mayor. We might've been angry about that a little bit, um, but we handled that well. We had a really elaborate discussion of our feelings about that. We told the mayor and the community that we did not agree with what he was doing, that we hoped he would move forward, um, and he made a vote that night, also not making a comment, by the way, to support that stance that the city took to not violate the state orders. But then guess what? He ignored that. He put his name on that, and then he continued to tell churches to reopen. He continued to go to businesses and ask for money for a fireworks show or any, an event that we knew as a community was illegal to have under a state order. So he put his name on that, and he voted to support us on that stance. But his word means nothing. And then we come to a resolution to this city last meeting, where we take a stand to try to show our public that we do care as a city about the people of color and the indigenous people of this town, and its history, its bad history, and how we're trying to make an effort to fix it. And I acknowledge that that resolution was just a teeny step, a teeny little step that was meaningless unless we took action. And again, all the commissioners well-spoke how they felt exhausted emotionally and physically. And the mayor just said, "Aye," with no comment. And I went home and I thought about it. And I'm embarrassed, and I'm sad, because that resolution has his name on it. He could've put his name on that other letter that he didn't do. He only did it when this community came out and said, "You're wrong, and we know you're wrong, and we caught ya." So how do we, how do we believe that? How do we expect that to be true? We can't. From this day on, further on, we can't. We cannot take his word at all. And are we gonna deal with that for two more years? Yes, unless the citizens of this town fix it. And we're gonna try to do our best tonight to deal with it, but this community, students, business owners, leaders in this town, need to speak up and need to put on notice, we are tired of it. We're not gonna accept it. We're not going to allow it. And we as ourselves are gonna do way better. Please resign.
Who wants to go next?
You wanna go?
Go right ahead.
Okay, um, thank you, Commissioner Smith, for your comments. Um, I think your emotional statements represent, um, a lot of the emotions that we've all been going through. I think he was correct that we've spent many, many hours thinking about what to say and what to do, and, um, how do we work with our community? And I agree, I, I, I'm happy that we have, um, the amount of public comment and people showing up and people pledging to, to support, uh, community engagement going forward, that they'll pay more attention. I hope, I hope you do, because we need people to be, um, holding our city accountable. It, it takes people paying attention and, and showing up and, and, and providing comments to us, um, and providing input. So I'm really happy that everybody showed up, and all of the pop- public comment that we've received, um, our inboxes have been flooded. I will say, I pol- I have not returned everybody's emails, just because I've, work a full-time job, and I haven't had a chance to return everybody's emails, um, but I have read them all. Um, so I, I want everybody to know that I, I have read everybody's comments. Um, I would like to reiterate a couple of comments. Um, I agree, there were, there was, um, someone who said that we were angry and, and/or that we were making, um, decisions, um, maybe in a hostile moment, or, um, you know, quick decisions that we haven't thought about. I, I, I can assure you that there isn't anybody up here who has spent hours and hours and some sleepless nights, um, thinking about this topic, our community, what's going on, how do we deal with this? Um, all of us, city staff and, um, our city commissioners, plus our staff, um, we've all spent long hours on it. I think, I agree with Commissioner Smith. I think the anger, um, I'm, I'm not angry, but it doesn't remove, um, my need to do my job, um, as a city commissioner. Um, so I'd like to reiterate for folks that were calling on the city commission to do something, we do not have the authority to remove the mayor. We are doing tonight what we have the authority to do. Um, so, um, I just want to, um, say that we are considering all of our options. Commissioner O'Donnell, thank you for leading us, um, through that, um, through your thoughts and through each of the items. Um, I will say, I, I support, um, the investigation that you mentioned. I support the censure, um, that was provided, and I don't know that you had a recommendation on the AB technical meeting interference, um, but I do think that the commission, um, should take some action, uh, tonight, um, and then everything else is up to the, the residents, um, and how, if they wanna take additional actions.
Commissioner McGriff?
I also want to thank the public for coming out, and thank you for all the phone calls that I've received, the emails, uh, as, uh, my fellow former Commissioner Bob Mahoney, aisle thirteen, has been very busy at Fred Meyer. Uh, people have been stopping me, talking with me. It has been the topic of conversation. I will concur with my fellow commissioners that, no, I am not angry. I am extremely disappointed, and somebody came up to me the other day at Miller Paint and said, "Gee, I bet you didn't know this was gonna happen when you signed up for this." And I said, "No, I did not, but that is part of the job of being a city commissioner. We take everything as it comes." Our job is to do the best that we can for our community, to listen to our community, and to hear our community when they ask us to do something. I agree with my other three commissioners that we do need to take action tonight. I think we need to be firm in our, and resolute in our displeasure with the actions. And I also will agree that the actions that have occurred have definitely injured the good name of this organization. I have had people calling me from across the country that I know who have already heard about this. Doesn't make me feel great. I believe it has disturbed the well-being of the city of Oregon City. I will concur with you, Mr. Commissioner Smith. This was not on my work plan of things that I wanted to try to accomplish over the time that I am on the commission. Economic development, tourism strategy, urban renewal, reaching out to our community, trying to get more people involved in their neighborhood associations, talking to small businesses. We have succeeded in getting our debt relief program. I've still been talking to people in the community about it. People have been asking me about it. Do we think there might be another round? What else can we do? We have, there is so, so much that we all want to do. There is so, so much that I want to do on behalf of this community, that's my home, that I love, that I care about. I feel that the work that we have embarked on this last year has been hampered. I don't know what are all the reasons behind it, but I think unfortunately, there can be really no excuse for the actions that have occurred. And I'm very, very sorry that we find ourselves in this position, but I think we need to be very firm. It is unacceptable behavior. We do not curtail citizen involvement in this commit- community, something I firmly believe in, citizen involvement, goal one, and all that goes with it. Oregon City had, has a reputation. It's been a little bit tarnished. I think we can recover. I brag about this town all the time. Our town has been disturbed. As they say, there is a rift in the force, so to speak. So I, uh, concur with Commissioner Lyle-Smith and Commissioner Smith that we do need to move forward with censure. That's all I wanna say. The other thing is, is that I do not believe in piling on, and I wanna quote Michelle Obama, who said, "When they go low, we go high." So we're gonna go high. I'm not gonna try to make any excuses for anybody's actions. I can only be responsible for my own. But it's, this has affected us, diverted us, and as you said, Commissioner Lyle-Smith, sleepless nights, worrying, stressing out about it, thinking about it, and God knows how the, I don't even know, the staff has probably just exploded, so I'm there with you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm gonna attempt to guide the commissioners' discussion further. Um, like them, I have no anger. In fact, it's sadness, because I recognize the leadership Mayor Holliday has provided in his first term. But there's two questions in front of this commission tonight. They can be dealt with as one, or they can be dealt with individually. There are questions of the censure of the mayor, and I, uh, it requires an emotion or an act or a vote. First one, as I said before, was defined by our city attorney. Have the mayor's actions injured the good name of the city? Have they disturbed its well-being? Have they hampered its work? The commission needs to either decide to make a motion to censor on that, or they can also decide that the second motion to censor is viol- is based upon the violation of Robert's Rules of Order, specifically by his actions in shutting down the meeting and excluding comment by commissioners. He refused to recognize members entitled to the floor. I asked the commission how they would like to proceed.
Can we do both?
I believe that's a question for our lawyer. Can you combine both, both into one motion, or do you need to do them individually?
Uh, they can be combined into one motion.
Thank you.
Can you make the motion, Commissioner O'Donnell, or Commissioner Smith?
I was okay doing them two separate.
Oh.
But, but.
You can also do them separately.
I'm afraid I would get it wrong, so that's why I'm putting it together.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you have a motion?
Sure, I'll do it just for the purposes of clarity. I'll make a motion to censor the mayor on two individual counts, one of which is a, his actions, as described by our city attorney, have injured the good name of Oregon City, have disturbed its well-being, and hampered its work. The second causative factor for a, a motion to censor is that, under Robert's Rules of Order, I will not read the entire thing, but specifically, he refused to recognize members entitled to the floor. That's the motion.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? King Don, color roll?
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle-Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
And Mayor Dan Holliday?
Abstain. Will that move on?
May I? May I make some closing statements?
Sorry, I'm waiting for my screen to go back. Go ahead.
I wanna talk to the community, and I'm proud of those people that came forward tonight, but what troubles me, truly troubles me, is where are the voices of our civic organizations? Tonight, your city commission spoke, but what about the others? What about all those impacted by these actions? Where is the Chamber of Commerce? Where is the Downtown Oregon City Association? Where is the Oregon City Business Alliance? Where, all those members whose business entities will be placed in jeopardy because of the way this city will be viewed? Where are the-
Where are the Oregon City Police Employees Association, who can potentially be placed in harm's way because of these actions? Where are our former mayors and clergy? And that, I'm very discouraged that those folks have not chosen to speak up. Now, I want to compliment the Oregon City School Board. A member named Stephen Sol sent a very meaningful and professional letter. But if you look at the impacts of this, not to recite it one more time, it impacts families of color, it impacts businesses considering relocating, it impacts city applications for grants where diversity and equity must be demonstrated. It potentially impacts our relationship to our tribal partners in the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. And unfortunately, this fair city, all of us have been painted with the same brush, painted with the same brush, and it's not favorable. So the goal tonight, by the actions of this commission, my goal, and I'm not, it's been difficult for me, and I've lost a lot of sleep, because well, I start at night and first thought in the morning. But the goal tonight is that hopefully, I want to start the healing, and the faster the better. And hopefully, tonight's commission activities start that healing. The mayor has his own decisions to make. The choices have been described and enumerated. And I'll leave the mayor to speaking his own defenses as time, when the time is right, when he decides the time is right. But my goal in the end is let's make every effort to get OC, to get Oregon City out from under this cloud and be an example to all. And that concludes my statement. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Mayor.
Commissioner Smith?
I would like to change my vote on the investigation to aye.
I think they're gonna...
To follow up on that, for that to happen, we'd need a motion to reconsider, which can be made only by somebody in the majority.
Okay.
And then to allow the revote.
I'd like to move that we consider the vote to allow Commissioner Smith to change his vote.
I'll second.
By acclamation, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Can I just ask one clarifying question for the commission? So there was an oral censure? Is there an expectation of staff to do anything additional at this point?
I think it should be... I like it in writing. I think it should be in writing. It's, I think Robert's rules of order demand that it be in writing.
Then, if that's the case, then Commissioner O'Donnell, this is not something that staff should do. So if you would volunteer to write the letter or work with Commission President Lyle Smith, but I think this is not something that needs to come from staff, it needs to come from you guys.
Well, I think we need an explanation on the rules of censure. You, sir, as mayor, are allowed to respond in your own defense, and you are not allowed to vote on the measure, to be quite honest.
Exactly.
And I had hoped that our guidance there would have informed us as such.
Well, that's why I stand.
Okay, well, at least one, two of us understood that. So I will do whatever puts forward the necessary actions to continue. Thank you, sir. I honestly think it's a summation by the city, by the recorder, of the action that was put before. The motion was very clear. It was based on two counts. I think it can be summarized by the city recorder. And if anyone, if staff wants to disagree with that, please say.
Ms. Riggs, you comfortable with that?
I can work with Ms. Riggs. Is there an expectation that we bring this back for the commission to see again? Or do I work with the commission president to ensure that it encapsulates the position of this commission?
If she wants us to take a quick look at it, I have no problem in doing that.
I would comment further that the mayor does have the opportunity to present a defense, if he so wishes, or he can accept the censure as given.
Well, let me say, Commissioner, as far as the two counts that you're talking about, I fully admit that I told the guy to, or the videotape to adjourn the meeting or to stop the recording when I adjourned the meeting. I've since learned that's been the policy all along, otherwise I wouldn't have talked to him. And what was the second one?
Second one was consisted of, did your actions, and this is as defined in the memo by our own city attorney, did your actions injure the good name of the Oregon City? Did they disturb its well-being? Or did they hamper its work?
Okay. And I will reserve any kind of statement on that for another time. So do you have direction, sir?
I will work with the commission president.
Yes.
Okay.
I will lead that effort and work with...
I'd like to ask for a point of clarification, please.
Go ahead.
I did not understand what you said when you, maybe I misunderstood. You said that that's been the policy all along. What's been the policy all along?
Yeah, I didn't understand that either.
The video recording traditionally has stopped at the drop of the gavel. And it has been for as long as they've been doing it. So in order to go to restart the meeting, someone would have had to go in and tell the videotape, hey, we're restarting the meeting. So I didn't understand that until I got an email that was, I forget whether it was by and through Ms. Riggs from Willamette Falls Media Center or whatever, but that has been the policy all along from them.
Well, then I would ask that we change that policy because it's my opinion that the only person's in charge of telling them to turn off the thing is Ms. Riggs. She is their direct supervisor, and nobody else in this room has the authority to tell them to turn it off. She tells them when to turn it on and when to turn it off, and I think that is not acceptable.
Okay.
I might remind the commission, the question at hand really is, were you, as commissioners, denied your right to speak? The other is mechanics of turning things off and on.
Okay. So are we done?
For now.
Okay. So now, once again, I would ask that we move item 70 up and let Mr. Geis present his deal so he can go home. Anybody have a problem now? Mr. Geis?
That was kind of a sarcastic comment by the mayor.
Twenty-three, twenty resolution twenty-fourteen, calling for an election with question shelves. Oregon City authorized underground placement of wastewater pipe in John Storm Park and adopting a ballot tile. Is Mr. Lewis actually going to take this?
Um, let me check. Sorry, he is...
Mayor, my video is not up, but for the most part, this is the West's presentation. I don't think there requires much introduction from my side.
Okay. And I'm not sure that we need to go through the whole presentation again. I'm pretty sure it hasn't changed.
Um, it actually has. They have a new presentation.
A whole brand-new presentation?
There's a couple slides that are repeat...
Mr. Geis?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Greg Geist. I'm the Director of Clackamas Water Environment Services. Thank you for the time being here tonight. We're going to ask for your support to allow a ballot measure that would allow us to place a second effluent pipe from our Tri-City Wastewater Treatment Plant under John Storm Park and into the Willamette River. Before I start tonight, I wanted to start, well, actually, I want to start with an apology. We did not, I did not get the information to the right people at the right time in a timely fashion. I should have been at the last commission meeting, and I apologize for that. We think that we have everything that we need tonight to answer all of your questions. We even have our project archaeologist, his name's David Sheldon. He's an expert in the archaeological questions that Commissioner Smith was asking about, and we believe that we can get satisfactory answers. Just a quick, and I wanted to do a quick couple-minute project overview just for the folks that are watching at home. So the current outfall from the Tri-City Plant was built in 1984, and it is nearing capacity during peak wet weather events. Those are the once or twice a year, the big storms that come in. We have to pass that through our facility, and we need, otherwise, we have backups into, frankly, Oregon City. So we need to build an additional pipe, 90-inch pipeline. One thing I want to be clear about is this is part of our five-year capital improvement plan that has been approved by our advisory committee, budget committee, and the board, so we're not asking for additional money from Oregon City residents. Next slide, please. And as you all are well aware, in order to move forward with this project, because it goes through on around under John Storm Park, we need to seek support of the Oregon City through a ballot measure. So briefly, we talked a little bit last time, or quite a lot, about the alignment. This green line is our preferred alignment for the new pipeline. The gray line is the pathway for the existing outfall. It runs along I-205 through the Cloverleaf, under John Storm Park, and out into the Willamette River. Next slide, please. And this is an illustration that just shows from a kind of a schematic or side view what we're proposing at this time, based on the preliminary geotechnical work that we've done. Pipeline, that shaft that you see, temporary launch shaft for tunneling, that shaft would be in the Cloverleaf off of 205, and then we would tunnel from there out into the river beneath John Storm Park. This is not to scale because it has not been designed quite yet, but based on the geotechnical work, there's a lens about 70 feet below Highway 99, approximately 50 to 60 feet below John Storm Park that would be advantageous for tunneling. And now I will introduce David Sheldon. He is the archaeologist for this project, and he is on the line. And he will walk us through...
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, thanks for giving me the time to speak tonight. I'm a professional archaeologist. I work for Jacobs Engineering out of Portland. I'm on file with the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office to conduct work in Oregon. I'm here to discuss the process of identifying and evaluating cultural resources for this project so that they can avoid and minimize and mitigate impacts to significant resources. So I'm going to provide just a brief description of some of the acronyms you're seeing and all of these cells here, and then I'm going to walk you through the process and tell you where we're at right now. So for just a couple of these acronyms, the SHPO, S-H-P-O, that's the State Historic Preservation Office. ACOE is the Army Corps of Engineers. JPA is the Joint Permit Application. And then you also see reference to the term historic properties, which is more of a regulatory term, but it's applicable to all significant cultural resources, be it archaeological or architectural. So I was approached approximately six to eight months ago, to, early on in the design process, to conduct a literature review of the State Historic Preservation Office's database, to see if there are any archaeological or cultural resources in the vicinity of the project alternatives that may be impacted by any of the alternatives. I completed that review and discussed with my project managers, and that led to the decision to look at one alternative in particular. So that's basically where we're at right now. We're looking at the desktop survey and site walk and reconnaissance survey. And the idea now is that we need to determine the appropriate regulatory approach for this project. So we understand that there will be a federal nexus in terms of permitting through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We plan on, excuse me, applying for a joint permit application for work that will be conducted within their jurisdiction. And part of that application process will be providing an archaeological report documenting the initial background results or background research and results of the desktop survey and recommendations for future work. So we are still very early in this process right now. If additional work is required, such as subsurface testing, then we will make those recommendations there. And the lead federal agency, the Army Corps of Engineers, will initiate the Section 106 process. The Section 106 process is a method of identifying and evaluating cultural resources through consultation with consulting parties, the area tribes, the State Historic Preservation Office, and local community governments. And so, again, we are still fairly early in this process, but once the process is started, then we will move forward with any additional work that needs to be done. So if we're planning on doing any public, or any subsurface testing on public lands, we'll need an archaeological excavation permit from the State Historic Preservation Office. Permits are required if you're working within a known site, or even if you're doing exploratory testing on public lands. So that would go out to the State Historic Preservation Office and area tribes for a 30-day review. And that permit will outline the necessary steps or the scope of work for the exploratory task, and also identify curatorial procedures or next steps. So where the, how the collection will be, collection of artifacts, if recovered, would be prepared for curation and where they would go for curation. After, you know, after we proceed with the permit and conduct the work, there will be an opportunity for tribal participation and local government participation if needed, if warranted. After that, we will assess the finds and evaluate their significance. And from there, this will aid in the project design and help the project avoid impacts or mitigate impacts to significant cultural resources or historic properties. In addition, usually there is some kind of open, or some kind of unanticipated discovery plan that would go along with any subsequent reporting that would detail the steps necessary or to take in case of an unanticipated discovery of cultural resources. So usually that involves stopping work in the immediate vicinity of the find until a professional archaeologist can assess the find and discuss appropriate paths forward with SHPO and area tribes. Does anybody have any questions?
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I appreciate this. The question I guess that I still have is, our first work session, I asked about, well, I kind of brought up my concerns about archaeological studies and archaeology, excuse me. And I guess my frustration has been that it was only until the last two or three days that, well, since Friday, that these answers have really started to be answered. I had a meeting with West staff on Monday, separate from all this, which I like to call sidebar meetings. Sidebar meetings are when you've basically not answered all the questions through multiple sets of meetings, and then you realize that you still have issues, and it's not going to get through the commission unless you answer them, and then you have a sidebar meeting away from the public to answer them. But yet, then sometimes even they're not answered there. So now they're being answered tonight, and I appreciate that. This could have been done, meeting one. So I hope that this steps, this project steps goes on to the website. Over the weekend, I tried to access the FAQs because it was only until Friday that the FAQs even mentioned archaeological issues. So I'm glad that that's in place. But when I went on the West's website, even finding the outfall project is impossible. You have to Google the specific project to find the page. There's, I can't find a link from the website. Even if you go on projects, there's no listing of that. So I found it. I just want it to be easier for the public to get this information. The only thing that I really still am kind of curious about is that the first work session, when I asked about this, there was kind of, and I may have misunderstood, there was a comment about a study, and we were told that we have an archaeological study as part of the outfall of scope, and then it was stated to do, which then made me assume that, okay, maybe you haven't done that yet. But then it was followed by, we're happy to share that information with you, and that some work has already been done by ODOT. So I guess my question is, some work has been already done by ODOT. Was that referring to a study that's already happened? Because the rest of it sounds like... Because the rest of it sounds like there's, the study hasn't happened yet, right?
I'll take a crack at that and then have David chime in. My understanding is that ODOT has or is conducting a very similar investigation and analysis.
Because of their 205 project?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, what was the other question?
Well, so the, the only reason I bring that up is because it was kind of implied to us that we would be able to see that information.
Oh, correct.
And then in our follow-up meeting, I was kind of told because of legalities between SHPO and the tribes, which I'm not sure how that pertains to this specifically, that we might not ever be able to see that stuff.
So, and I'm going to let David step in on that one, but my understanding is that if there are culturally significant artifacts.
Specific, yeah.
Found.
Right.
And documented, that it's not lawful to, to make that public information because of the potential for looters to come in.
Oh, definitely.
I'm sure David.
Right, but making that, making that available to the city in an executive session or in a way that the city that owns the piece of property would know, and I, not specifics, but I mean, I just want to know that, and I, and I don't think we even really would care about the details, but if something's found on that site of importance, I think that's something we should know.
Yeah.
And it could be that simple. And, and just to know how we would get notified of that if that's something, if something did happen.
Okay. I'll let David weigh in on that, but I, I had not thought about executive session. That's intriguing.
I believe that refers to the Antiquities Act.
Right. So maybe there isn't a way, but I'm just curious.
There's a specific requirement about disclosure, which is, the answer is not.
Briefly, sir.
This is Dave. Yeah, I think basically what happened is there is a, some telephone going on, basically. The, the information can totally be shared. The idea is to keep location information, sensitive location information regarding archaeological resources out of the public sphere, so that, like, like was said earlier, that looters don't have as easy access to that information. Looting is a huge problem all over the country, and the State Historic Preservation Office is taking active measures to reduce that by firewalling sensitive archaeological information behind their permissions. So to access that location information, you have to be a qualified archaeologist on file with the State Historic Preservation Office. And they, part of being on file is acknowledging that you're going to do your best to, to minimize the spread of this document, with the understanding that this information needs to be shared for, for project-specific purposes.
I would just say, if, as long as we can have at least some of this information on that site, my, my worry is, you know, once this goes onto the ballot, the one vote that you're going to have against it is people saying, well, they haven't even acknowledged any of this. So having as much information to say, we do know that this is an important site, we are considering, you know, all resources and abilities to deal with it, the more we front that, the better it is, because missing that piece, I think, really hurts you, your effort in approving this project. That's it.
I couldn't agree more. So, next slide, please. So I wanted to, I don't know if you noticed in the kind of flow chart, the notification of the tribes on issues like this typically happens through what the joint permit application. We are not to that point yet, but we are already engaged with the tribes, Grand Ron in particular. We had a meeting with them on May 28th. We have another one with the Tribal Historic Preservation Office, June 25th, and we are hosting a project field tour with those folks in July. And I wanted to extend an invitation for anybody on this commission to join us. So if you would like to, let me know, and we will make sure that you are included in that. But we're trying to be very proactive. We understand this is a ballot measure, and we need to get support for it, we need to be transparent, we need to give people the information. Clearly, I drop the ball with Commissioner Smith, but we're learning as we go and will get better. Next slide.
One second. Katie, can you put that on the commission's calendar, the information on the tour?
Sure.
And then they can, they can show up or not at their leisure.
So as far as the public outreach that we're already starting, spring, summer, we've already held a whole bunch of stakeholder meetings. We've got more coming up, along with walking tours. We're going to have some neighborhood forums midsummer, and then open houses on August 26th and September 21st. Just today, I, I don't know if Katie had a chance to distribute this to the group, but we put out a interim community outreach report, just to give you all an update on exactly who we've been talking to, and when, and about what. So we're trying to be very thoughtful about this. We do have a communication consultant onboard, in addition to Shelley Perini, who's leading this effort. I think we're being very thorough and very inclusive. Everybody we meet with, we, the last question we ask them is, who else should we be talking to? So we're, we're not going to take our foot off the gas.
That it?
That is it, sir.
Can you bring the Zoom back up, please?
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm sorry, I left my, my hand up, I didn't mean to.
Well, I was surprised because while half of the problem that we had was Commissioner Smith's issues, the other half were still the issues about technical data flows, all those other kinds of things that we talked about getting from Wes. Are you comfortable at this point that we've been given that information?
I'm good. The main concern were archaeological concerns as expressed by Commissioner Smith. I'm curious if Wes has done any drilling, either vertical or horizontal as of yet, or if there, what's their timetable for that, and how does that fall into place with these archaeological concerns?
Commissioner O'Donnell, yes, we have done preliminary borings, and that's how we, if you, that side profile that you saw, that's how we identified that lens of material that we think is going to be good for tunneling. Jeff Stahler is on the line, he could provide more detail, but I think we've, we put about 10 holes between our facility and out in, out in the river.
So are they horizontal borings or vertical borings in the riverbed?
They are vertical.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion at this point?
I have a, just a quick question, please, if I may, Mayor.
Commissioner McGriff.
Yes, Mr. Geis, just a question about, I'm, I'm very aware of the Antiquities Act and Section 106 and all of that process. Two concerns. So we're talking about a general area. On the ballot measure, there's going to be some sort of a map. So how are, and maybe David knows this as well, how are we looking at securing this site in terms of, because people might go, oh, there, and I, you know, they might want to mess around, and is there going to be security, all of that, I'm assuming, under construction, because people are very resourceful, particularly people looking for that type of thing.
That is true, and I think one of the beauties of this, the, the construction method that we chose, being tunneling, is that there's really nothing at the surface. We are going to be, there, there will be a bore shaft in the Cloverleaf, which is not very accessible, obviously. I hadn't thought about security for that, but I'm sure there will be. But we will not daylight, we, the current plan.
Yeah, nothing will be daylighted, okay.
Yeah, we, we're going to come out in the river, so.
And all the spoils from the drilling are going to be sifted and searched and all that.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve Resolution 20-14, calling for an election with the question, shall Oregon City authorize underground placement of wastewater pipe in John Storm Park and adopting the ballot title?
Second.
Moving second for discussion. Call roll.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
And Mayor Dan Holliday.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much. So we're rapidly coming up on our 10 o'clock session time. I assume that the rest of you want to move forward, but I have reached the end of my rope physically, so I, yeah, the only thing that might show up is on 7F, the City Commissioner, Primary and Alternate Member for the Oregon City 2040 Project Advisory Team. If any of the commissioners are interested in that, please send me an email and indicate why, and I will make a.
Can I just tell you that I would be interested, yes?
Please send me an email and that sort of thing, and I'll make that decision before the next meeting.
Do we need a motion to continue, because I'd like to make sure we get through Item 7B?
Oh, I was, I was assuming you were going to, but having a motion is what requires, so please go ahead.
Um, I'd like to move that we continue the meeting so we can get through at least Items 7B, 7E, and 7G. If somebody else wants to throw anything else in there, and then we have to defer everything else, I guess.
I think we're just going to motion to continue and see how far we get.
Just keep going. Okay. I'll move that we continue the meeting past the 10 o'clock deadline.
By acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Okay. Then I'm going to turn the gavel over to Commissioner President, Lyle Smith.
All right, so our next item of business. Is item 7B?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there any new about this item?
Uh, this is the first time, 7B is the first.
No, I mean, any new information that we didn't get from before?
Yeah, so this is a new item. This is Item 7B, first reading of ordinance number 20-1008, amending the chapter 2.30 of our code, freely addressing our citizen involvement committee. Mr. LaSalle, can I just go to Bob?
Bob, I apologize for not being able to stay, but I can't say anymore.
Well, I was going to tell you a little funny thing tonight, but considering the gravity of tonight's meeting, I think I'll pass on.
Let's, let's move.
On that.
We're ready.
Sometime back, before this COVID-19 thing came along, I, you tentatively approved the changes that we're proposing tonight for the CIC city code. And this will be the first reading of that ordinance. There are a few changes that Laura will show you as we go along here. And then we found another one as we, as Betty Mum found for us tonight, so I'll just go through these. The first one there, 2.30.010, it was meant to more clearly define where other duties may be found. We'd like to see the CIC be a more device, diverse community, able to address more than just land use when asked. So this includes the mostly quasi-judicial boards. Item 2.30.030A eliminates the wording, primary and alternate allows for two equal members from each neighborhood association, which we discussed pretty thoroughly before. Item 2.3.030B defines how neighborhood association names are selected and submitted for appointment by the mayor, and provides for a courtesy explanation for non-appointment, and then also further defines the mayor's wishes, which would help the neighborhood associations in their selection process. Item 2.3.030C defines how to replace a resigned CIC member, wasn't addressed before. 2.30.03D gives definition of the membership and shows that there are citizen members of the community, not businesses. And the reason for that was held over from the previous bylaws, in that the businesses have a lot of other venues that they can use for their purposes. This is really the only citizens one. 2.3.03F defines the chairperson responsibility and relieves the city liaison of the responsibility of that particular item. 2.3.030G more clearly defines reasons for member dismissal and how the neighborhood submits a new member for appointments, clarifies how that's done. 2.30.040A.1 simply shows how members are elected and they're not appointed, they're elected. 2.30.040A.2 adds the chairperson's responsibility for the agenda. And that's, we've already been doing that, and that seems to be working out pretty good. Although it puts a little more work on my part, but I asked for it, so sometimes you got to be careful what you ask for. Let's see here. 2.30.040A.4 adds definition to the secretary's role. 2.30.040B.2 shows that the city is responsible for providing a staff person for support of the CIC, and further defines that person's responsibility. And it removes the power of only one person to eliminate the CIC. No other committees or boards have this provision for the city manager to, to remove staffing, I might add. 2.30.050 better defines who can call meetings. 2.30.05B further defines the two voting members for the neighborhood association. Another one thing I found, or actually Betty Mum found a source tonight, was we'll go back to the point, the very first, 2.30.020 duties under D, it was still in there, address grievances of the CIC and of neighborhood associations, but that was eliminated by you a long time ago.
Last year, I think.
Yeah, so just strike that in its entirety. It shouldn't, shouldn't even have been in there. Laura, did you have some clarifications you wanted to make?
Yes, thank you. So this package of code amendments was brought to you from the CIC. I just wanted to identify three things for the commission for your consideration. The first one is a proposed code amendment, which the sentence strikes out basically the validity of the chapter and just identifies that the CIC bylaws would be in charge, and so I would recommend just this minor code amendment. So the code amendment that we would recommend would re, would read, "The CIC shall foster public participation and education regarding land use for the citizens of Oregon City on behalf of the city commission and perform other duties as identified within," and then keep the words, "this chapter," add the word "and."
And I, I agree with that.
You agree with that? They and the CIC bylaws, we want to make sure both the chapter and the bylaws. I just want to also acknowledge that there are no bylaws. As you know, they'll come back to you in a city commission work session, and then we'll come back for adoption after that, so just a reference on that.
Aren't they operating under some bylaws right now?
There is no bylaws, there's just this code.
Okay.
Right now. When they, I think there were some old draft bylaws, but they were never fully adopted.
Adopted, okay.
Yeah.
I recall that from when I was a CIC alternate.
So they've, they've picked up with the old version and have modified them, and they'll be coming back. When they were codified in 2015, we deleted the old bylaws and just used the codification language. All right, so the second one is just a note. A sentence was added that says, if a member selected by a neighborhood association is not appointed to the CIC, it will be informed of the reason for the non-appointment, and I just wanted to acknowledge that there is no criteria for appointment to the CIC. The authority to appoint to the CIC falls to the mayor, and there's no criteria, so acknowledging that. Then the last item has to do with a code amendment that remove, that identifies that city staff will be on staffed. There will be a city liaison staffing the CIC, so it requires that. And then it removes the sentence that says, "Consistent with the city charter, the city manager shall retain his or her discretion to suspend staffing when reasonable circumstances warrant." And so staff recommends removing those two changes, because the charter identifies the city manager as the, having the responsibility to staff committees as appropriate. And so this would be a case where it's requiring a staff position.
But I think to expand on that, when you put in here, will.
But I, I think to expand on that, you, when you put in here, "will include," you have the authority as the commission to adopt the budget. If you decide, let's say, years from now, that, you know, there are, there are staffing issues, there's budgetary issues, you know, then, and a, a budget is adopted that dictates the staffing that's available. It's my role as the city manager, as empowered by the charter, to administer the employees within this city that work here. Um, so I, I am concerned with the "will include" language in here. Um, it seems to be contradictory to your charter as well as your budget authority. Um, you, you could potentially end up in a situation where as you're looking at budgeting issues that may or may not occur, um, and then you have, would be in conflict with what this says in the code. I also believe that it violates the charter and the responsibility that's invested in the city manager as the chief executive administrator of the city. Um, I did propose language, uh, that said, "The city manager shall inform the city commission, the CIC, of the suspension of the city liaison should it occur," to try to find a middle ground related to this. Um, uh, so I, I do, I do agree that, um, I, I am concerned with the language as proposed in this section.
And I would, I would say that during our CIC meetings, we had quite a little discussion about that, and there were agreements and non-agreements. I don't like the very existence of the CIC left in one person's hands, which as it states is true now. However, I would not wish to delay these, this amendments to the code. So if you so wish, will just remain as the previous code states. That's, um.
So, uh.
I give up on that one.
So I, I think we'll take these one at a time, so let's talk about the one that's on the screen. Um, I can't see if Commissioner O'Donnell wants to speak or not. Any, any comments on this? I can tell you, I, so I sit on the CIC as the liaison and, um, I agree, there was, there was some discussion and Mr. Conkle and I have been pretty honest about these couple of items, um, where, um, I didn't say that I could support them when they came before the commission. I was honest about that and, and I think Mr. Conkle tried to provide a, a compromise solution of, of informing, um, when, um, if there were gonna be changes, uh, needed regarding the, um, city liaison. Um, so.
You wanna go?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, when I first read it, I didn't understand what suspended means, meant in this context, but I, I clearly understand that now. Um, so, um, you know, I appreciate that, I just don't want that to be read wrong, 'cause there's no follow-up that says because of funding or staffing issues or whatever, there's nothing to explain that. So it's like, oh, well, we've had times where the city staff has been pulled from the CIC for random reasons, just because we felt like it or because of political climate or arguments or whatever. So I don't want that to be read in that, that way. I guess that would be my only concern about that.
Mr. McGriff?
Yes, thank you. Um, my only concern is that, uh, we did have a liaison at one time and when that person's position was eliminated, all but about two neighborhood associations survived. I mean, excuse me, only two survived during that time period, uh, and the others faltered. So I would hope that the intent of us putting it, this in here would make a difference during budget time. And we just professed over the last two hours about how we appreciate the involvement of our community. And this is one of the many ways in which we can express that desire and follow through on that commitment. So I understand about the budget and there's gonna be five people, maybe not me, who will be making those decisions. So again, I'm, I, I will say, okay, at this point, but like you said, it can't be for some, you know, we, we'd hope it's more than just some random decision. This is, this is really, really important and, uh, I have certainly appreciated the staff commitment to work with these folks. Sometimes it's a little bit like herding cats, but, uh, they're really great cats.
Well, I think we're, we got a pretty good group right now that seems to be working well together and.
Which is good.
We're, we're, we've lost some, some activity from some of the neighborhood associations and I, I plan as the, the CIC chair to actively pursue. And so if any of you.
Go whip him into a shape ball.
Live in a particular neighborhood that's not active anymore, I really would appreciate your support on that. I'm gonna try to get ahold of, if somebody can provide me with Mayor Neely's contact information, I appreciate, 'cause I'm gonna put some pressure on that old guy to.
All right, uh, Mr. Conkle, did you have anything you needed to add?
I, I, I don't wanna belabor the point.
Yeah, no, I think we can move on.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I don't wanna belabor the point either. I thought, Commissioner, I thought that Mr. Conkle's offerings, amendments were, were good, his justification was good. As you know, I've met with you and Bob and others at the CIC. I questioned about the, the need to furnish a reason why someone wasn't selected. I mean, they, they don't even do that in private industry, other than to say there was a more qualified candidate. So, you know, I'm, I'm pretty easygoing on this whole thing.
Could I, could I speak to that, uh, Commissioner Lyle Smith?
Sure.
I feel, um, I have, I have experience in being a CIC, a CIC rep in the past and also an alternate. My feeling is that if the neighborhood associations feel that someone is qualified to represent them, I don't think that they should be vetoed and I would like to see that removed. It's their representative, they are saying that we have confidence that this person and it shouldn't have to do with, anything to do with a personality or anything of that sort. So I, I don't support that item in whatever, I think I wrote down, in B further back, that if they're not appointed, they want them, that should, that should be good enough.
So, um.
If there's a reason why that's not appropriate, then I would like to hear it because.
So I don't, um, I, I have a feeling that they are frantically looking up, up the, the legal piece of it. I, you know, the mayor has the authority to make commission appointments, period. That's in our charter. Um, this is asking for a courtesy notification. Um, I will say that when I think about all of our committees and the appointments that the mayor does, the majority of them, other than this one, people are applying for those positions. We solicit for candidates, they submit applications, we interview them often, um, and at the end of the day, there's a selection process and then an official appointment, appointment kind of thing from the mayor. This, this committee is different. It doesn't function like that. They're not submitting applications to us to review. They are acting, our neighborhoods are, are, um, electing these folks and selecting them to represent them.
They're vetting them themselves.
They're vetting them themselves and so therefore I feel like this committee operates differently than all of our other committees. Um, this is asking for a courtesy notification essentially, um, because I think the mayor still has to do the appointments by our charter. Um, and I'm seeing nods by our legal counsel.
I'm not saying he can't appoint them, I'm just saying that if they nominate them, they should get the people that they want because they're the people that have been vetted in their own neighborhood association. I can't see somebody in a neighborhood association appointing someone to represent them that they didn't vet.
Right, no, I agree. So, um, I, I see you, Commissioner Smith, so my guess, I question to Mr. Kabizman, is there a way, is there anywhere around that?
Yeah.
Topic?
So the, the charter specifically provides, "The mayor shall appoint the committees provided by the rules of the commission." And so if you create this commission, the mayor appoints them if, and so you can't tell him, you can't tell the mayor, "This shall be the person you appoint through, uh, code." You know, certainly you would expect that the mayor understands the, the process and how, as, uh, Commissioner Lyle Smith said, how this commission is different than other ones. But at the same time, you can't dictate that they, uh, that he do that. You can dictate that he provide a reason.
Right, that's.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, that was my point, 'cause we, I think we've had this conversation before and my, my comments in the past have been, there should be a process in which the mayor denies an appointment from a group and he needs to respond to why. There needs to be some rationalization for that, so that there's an answer back, not just, "I'm not doing this." I, I think that would be at least something then they could have in writing that would give them some notices to why and hopefully it's a good reason.
I suppose then they could appeal to us as a group if they object, so.
And another point about that is that he, he could go ahead and deny somebody, but if, if the neighborhood association wasn't given a reason why he denied them.
Right.
They could go turn around.
Nominate someone.
And elect another person with the exact disqualifications that the mayor had without his.
Right.
Explanation, courtesy explanation.
Right. Commissioner O'Donnell, do you have anything further on this?
Well, I don't wanna get too caught up in it. I, I do feel that the neighborhood should nominate their person who best knows their situation and represent them. I also thought about when we made a selection to fill a vacancy, we didn't have to tell the unsuccessful candidates why, they didn't get it, we just simply chose the best candidate. So, uh, deal with it as you will.
Yeah.
But we did, most of us actually spoke, spoke as to why we did.
All right, so we've made changes, uh, to this ordinance, uh, the language.
I, I, I think we have two options. Um, one, we can, I think we have a pretty clear direction. Mr. Kabizman could, is gonna have to reread all of this, all these changes, or we could come back with a clean version on July 1.
I think you should come back with a clean version.
I, I think we should just talk about what the amendments are and move forward. I'd like to get this, get this group up, back and running and I, I don't wanna see any more delay.
Do you have to read the entire ordinance or just the changes?
So what it, what the charter says is that the, uh, the cha, sections containing the changes shall be read in full. And so, uh, in terms of the sections, you know, there's been some discussion in the past, but you know.
So due, yeah, so due to the time and the hour of this long meeting, um, Commissioner O'Donnell, do you have an opinion on this?
I would have to submit a clean copy on our next meeting.
Okay, and so just to summarize, we're going to include the "and" the CIC bylaws, as Ms. Turway pointed out.
Yes.
We're going to revert back to the original language, removing the "will include a city liaison" and re-insert, "Consistent with the city charter, the city manager shall retain hers or her discretion to suspend staffing."
Yes.
With the existing, then I propose to add, "The city manager shall inform the city commission and the CIC of the suspension of the CIC liaison should it occur," through that section. And then we'll clean up.
And the reason therefore.
And then.
I think, uh, any reason therefore is inappropriate.
At the end of that sentence.
Yep, not, there's a reason you would suspend.
And the reason for the suspension.
Understood.
Yeah.
And then.
Remove, remove the reference to the.
The grievance.
The grievance.
That's in the very beginning. And then we are in agreement on the mayor, mayoral notification of, of non-appointment of a member. Okay, I think we have everything. Do you need a motion or you're good?
I, I think.
We're just gonna table this for now.
We'll table it, we'll bring it back.
Okay, thank you, Mr. LaSalle. I think we're done.
Well, thank you very much. We'll be following up again when we get this all done with your approval of the bylaws. So look forward to that exciting time.
We're just gonna make a motion and approve it, Bob, so we don't need to talk about it anymore.
It's clean, it'll be easy, yes. All right, let's move on to 7C. This is the second reading of ordinance number 20-1007, vacating a section of right-of-way adjacent to 13735 Lazy Creek Lane. Is there any discussion on this item?
Nope.
No.
No.
No, hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved, moved to approve. Seconded.
Call the roll.
Oh, it is an ordinance, so we'll read the, the title. Ordinance number 20-1007, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City, vacating a section of right-of-way adjacent to 13735 Lazy Creek Lane.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, I'm gonna just keep charging on unless somebody decides they're too tired to stop. Charge on, um, item 7A, this is a second amendment to the real estate contract with FNF Structures and the sale of the Oregon City Police Department. Chief Ben?
Good evening, Commissioner. Um, so, FNF Structures, uh, we have a current, uh, purchase and sale agreement under an extension that I believe, uh, ends tomorrow. And they have asked for an extension, uh, 45 days and, uh, the agreement's in front of you, that would include a $15,000 non-refundable deposit. Uh, they are here and that's it.
Did you relay our suggestion?
So the, so the city commission met earlier in executive session to discuss this, uh, contract, uh, and amendment, and we, um, probably need to state what our proposed, our proposal is.
I think the way to think about it is that, you know, the, had a discussion and there was, uh, a, a desire to see some changes to it, um, and to propose those changes and, and now might be the appropriate time to talk about what those changes are. And in particular, the, the, um, the amendment proposed by the FNF is a 45-day extension and a $15,000 non-refundable earnest money. And I think the commission was interested in exploring the idea of a, a, instead of a 45-day extension, a 14-day extension? 30, I'm sorry.
30, 30-day extension.
Any further discussion on this modification?
Nope.
To 30 days?
I'm ready to make a motion. Nope, not really.
Does anybody wanna hear from?
I don't know what, I mean.
Um, Mr. Fowler from FNF Structures?
Well, perhaps Mr. Fowler would like to hear from us. I, I think the message is, we, this commission will grant 30 days, but that's a hard stop. Get, get done what needs to be done.
Okay, I think that message has been conveyed. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move the second amendment to the real estate contract with FNF Structures for the sale of the Oregon City Police Department with the change that the, uh, timeframe be changed from 45 to 30 days, all else remaining the same.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's seconded. Call the order, call the roll.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
No.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Right, the motion passes. Moving on to 7F, city commission primary and alternate member of the OC 2040 project advisory team, uh, Ms. Turway. I know, I know we have some direction, we received some direction from the mayor earlier. He requested, um, interested commissioners to just email him. Um, do you have anything else to add, Ms. Turway?
Uh, no, well, the position will meet up to 10 times between now and next December, so a, a year from now, um, and some change. And, um, we're excited for this project.
I think we should, I think we could, based on the direction from the mayor and the request to provide, um, email, um, email of interest to him, um, I propose continuing this to the July 1st meeting and then a decision can be made.
Oh, may I speak on that? Commissioner Lyle Smith?
Sure. Commissioner McGriff?
Uh, yeah, I guess unless somebody is just dying to do it, I would like to, uh, get the support from the other commissioners that, uh, I be recommended for filling the position on our behalf.
I'm not prepared to do that. I think everybody should have a chance to review it and decide if they wanna apply. It's not that urgent.
Review, review what?
Review the, uh, the qualifications for the position, the duties in the position and decide if they wanna apply.
Well, I, I read all that one in Commissioner Report 20-312, 310. Okay, fine.
Not too.
Just trying to keep things moving.
So is this, I was a, I was a little surprised by the, the mayor's comment, this, is this a mayor appointed or a commission?
I believe it would fall under the same guideline. The only, your renewal commission is, is the only commission I can think of where the commission votes, uh, for the membership. That's state statute that override.
All right, so this item will be coming back to us July 1.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Ms. Turway. All right, moving on to 7G, community showcase and use of gift certificates. Mr. Conkle?
And I will be turning this over, that we're bringing this back, uh, for, um, some adjustments that were made based on the last presentation that we had at our last city commission meeting. And I'll be having, um, James Graham, as I sit here and try to stall a little bit and.
He's coming.
Oh, here he comes.
Glenn Trough, uh, give you an update on the, the changes that have been, uh, proposed, um, after a meeting that staff held with Commissioner McGriff and Commissioner Smith, uh, to walk through the program.
Save the best for last.
We're still going away.
We're not done yet.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners, City Manager. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm James Graham.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners, City Manager. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm James Graham, Economic Development Manager. And, uh, before I start on the community showcase, I just have a, an announcement, uh, that, uh, Oregon City was awarded $35,000, uh, a loan forgiveness grant from, uh, the state to supplement or complement our Oregon, Oregon City Business Desk, Debt Relief Initiative. So...
Great. Awesome.
Yeah.
So, that was good news. And you'll hear more about the details later, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. Uh, in terms of the community showcase, um, there were only two, I won't go over the whole thing, but there were only just two questions that remained, and, um, we'll address those. In regard to videos, uh, we were gonna be doing snippets of the historical sites, and, um, we, we decided that we would be hiring a professional, uh, uh, video, videographer, uh, what is it? Uh, video...
Videographer.
Videographer, thank you, uh, to do it. And so, therefore, um, uh, that would be that. And then, in terms of a production schedule, um, thanks to, uh, Commissioner McGriff and, uh, Commissioner Smith, we were able to sort of chronologically, uh, put the various sites in, in, in order in terms of their historic, uh, significance. So, um, the shooting would be done in that particular order. And so, we're scheduled to start, uh, on, start the entire, or make the entire process go live on August 3rd. So, those are the two, uh, questions with, that, uh, I wanted to address. Are there any questions that you may have?
Thank you. Um, I will say, I, I thought your staff report this time around, um, was much better. I think it addressed many of the questions, certainly addressed the questions that I had. Is, are there any other comments, discussion from the commission?
Um, just thank you for, um, daring to, uh, have a meeting with me and Denise at the same time.
We, um, regaled him with all the facts that we know.
And history of the entire city, doing that, yeah.
Yes, the whole, it just, the world as we know it.
Did you have a pillow?
You'll never fall for that again.
He knows, he knows all now, so, uh, and there will not be a quiz.
But there will be a tour. We're taking him for a tour.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna take him on a fam tour, uh, as soon as we're able. Um, I did wanna just add...
He has run the gauntlet.
I do.
He has run the gauntlet, for sure.
If you do a van tour, I wanna go.
Oh, a fam tour? Yeah, we, we're taking Tony. So, yeah, you can, you can go. You can come too. We'd love for you to come.
Well, you do start getting to, uh, the commission at that point.
Well, we'll advertise it that we're taking people on a tou, on a tour, because we're going to regale them with our vast knowledge of history.
We can do multiple tours.
So, we can do multiple tours, but, you know, we might, we might say something different, so you should be on the one that, that I'm on. Anyway, I just wanted to add that, um, the other thing that I wanted to, uh, compliment, uh, Mr. Graham and his staff on is that, uh, when we were meeting, one of the things he said is that he wants to hire local, which I think is really encouraging and supports some of our goals to bring the, uh, many talents of our community members into the fold and have them work on projects that directly relate to them, plus they will have some skin in the game, because they're here and they're local. So, I really appreciate your making that emphasis on, uh, soliciting these folks and getting them on board. So, I wanna, uh, support that. And, uh, do we need a motion?
I think so.
Um, I'd like to move that we, um, uh, adopt the community, uh, the, the program for the community showcase and the use of the gift certificates as proposed in the staff report.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Call the roll.
Oh, in terms of the, uh, and also, uh, the motion to use remaining balance of the, the remaining balance of the, uh...
The $16,000.
$16,000, and then add the $3,000 from the general fund.
Okay.
Yes.
To make it a total of $20,000.
Okay. Well, I would amend the motion to include the use of the remaining, uh, funds from the debt, the initial debt relief program and add $3,000 from the general fund.
And I'll second.
Okay. Motion seconded.
Commissioner, uh, Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, earlier in the evening, when it was much, much earlier...
Much earlier.
Um, we had discussed pooling from the consent agenda. These are the ones that I'm aware of. 8B, 8G, 8H, and 8L. Were there any other items that were requested to be pulled from the consent agenda?
No.
Do we want to...
I'd like to go ahead and move that we approve the remaining items that are on the consent agenda, except for those that were mentioned.
Okay.
Seconded.
Ms. Rigs, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
And Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
All right. So, um, due to this late hour, what is, where's the commission at on taking up the four items that, that we pulled? You wanna keep charging?
I'm, I'm willing to, or go with the low-hanging fruit.
I do not wanna keep charging. I, I've watched our decisions.
Deteriorated.
Their highest quality, when we're, they're at their highest quality, and we're all fresh.
Oh, how tactful. That was very tactful.
I, I, I would agree, and I understand that. Um, Mr. Conkle, are any of these items of dire significance that we really need to tackle them tonight? I know you're looking through the...
Looking, what, what, what?
Ah, it's no way. Oh, jeez. Well, I would say this to staff. You look at tonight's agenda. There's seven primary items of which new neighbors, and there's 15, 15 consent agenda items. This is not an unexpected outcome to run this out.
I feel the same way. I, 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 I'm, I'm a little frustrated with that. Everyone knew what we were dealing with tonight, and I feel like, I actually spent all today just going through the consent agenda, and it feels to me that some of these were slipped in, um, as if we wouldn't catch them. And we caught some, I caught some important issues that I think we need to talk about. I don't know that we can cover those, you know, in a, in a very short time.
I don't think we can cover them. There is one 8L that is declaring an emergency. Um, is that the only one that rises to the level of needing to talk about it?
Well, we had some discussion about it, uh, previous, and I think one of the things we were very clear about is that we wanted to make sure, and Mr. Lewis was very clear that he was gonna make sure that these folks knew that even though there was going to be an exemption to the noise, they were gonna do everything they possibly could to keep, keep it down, and, you know, try to, uh, minimize the, you know, the pounding and all that. So, I, I don't have, I don't really have any problem with, um, that one, because we did very thoroughly discuss it based on your, your comments.
So, this is a different item. So, Mr. Lewis, you might as well come on up. I think we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this one.
Unwarranted noises on Malala.
Sorry, Commissioner O'Donnell, um, 8L, um, declaring an emergency and exempting the Malala Avenue Streetscape Project. So, my understanding, this is the Malala Avenue project, the previous one where we...
It was Myers Road, but it's, it was similar.
Was Myers Road in 213.
And the same concerns are my concerns as well.
So, I, I will say, um, my concern with this was the timeline, um, that this was unlawful noises on a temporary basis, and yet it, the resolution went through June of 2021. And so, my proposal was that we, um, we just change the timeline to maybe four months, and that would give, um, us, our community, a chance to provide feedback as to before we grant this for an entire year. Um...
I don't have any problem with that. If you wanna make that amendment?
I could, I could maybe address that a little bit. Um, so, I did plug in for a year just to try to get some latitude, 'cause I know that there's gonna be, this is gonna be a lengthy project, and, uh, the first night work starts at the north end, which is near the Beaver Creek intersection. And the other major element of that is when we're at the ODOT end at 213, where we're really kinda impacting those two major intersections. The, so, the majority of the work, and the work that's listed in the contract is, is that allows for night work, is really that block between Clermont and, um, Beaver Creek Road on Malala Avenue, where they're doing waterline work. And it, and it, and its alignment is such that it, it, you know, if you've been in any trenching effort, you recognize it's gonna cross multiple lanes of travel there. So, we specified that to be allowable at night. Um, and then the other thing is down at ODOT. Um, we're working with the contractor on schedule. We definitely heard the concerns from the Myers Road, um, project. So, I kinda wrote some of those things. We heard that from last time in there. And it is our objective to reduce the amount of night work to bare minimum, but I think there's gonna be those other intermittent, intermittent times when, for instance, we need to dig out all the roadway out in front of the post office, for instance. We're probably gonna force that to happen at night. Um, PGE is talking about, uh, wanting to do customer shut-ons, or shut, shutdowns and re-energizing at night. So, we got a lot of work going on there, a lot of different, you know, types of work. We, it's our intent to, again, keep that night work to a minimum. And, uh, the other little element of this is, this is specific, this request is specific to when we're in those kinda residential zones, and much of Malala isn't really a residential zone. So, there's kinda this mixed bag. I didn't wanna send mixed messages. We just, we're asking for some latitude to be able to manage that. If you wanna give it to us in four-month chunks, that's fine, too.
John, there's that apartment complex that's right across from Joanne Fabrics. It's right across from Buy Mart. That's really close to the road.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's the, that's where I think the key residential impact is going to be. I mean, noise carries at night, but they're, I mean, they're like right there.
Yeah, they're right on the road.
They're like right there.
That, and, and that's the segment where we've got kinda the early challenge with the waterline. That, the waterline is right in front of that apartment complex. So, yes, we are asking for that.
Right.
Uh, wanna minimize it as much as we can, but it's, it's a balance between trying to move traffic through there during construction and do that safely, and allowing, um, you know, work to progress.
Right. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, I feel this way. It's now June. If we give them three to four months, three months takes us to by August, September. I like either three or four. I'll go with the will of the commission, but I want these contractors to demonstrate to us that they're making every effort to confine the volume of noise. And if we just give them the whole 12, 12 months, it's like, hey, we got it, boys. Let's do what we wish. So, guess what? You're, you're being evaluated during this first period, whether it be three or four months. Show us what you got. So, I'll go with whatever the will of the commission is.
I'll support four.
Okay. And, and, you know, I, I assume, but I don't want to assume, that there's some outreach to those local residents, particularly that apartment complex that we're talking about, that we know of, that's right, that will absolutely be affected by this. So, um...
Yeah. In fact, uh, uh, online open house tomorrow night, um, night work is on the, kinda, the docket for that discussion. So, uh, people can register through our website. So, I'll put a plug in for that as well.
I think a little more than that, because apartment, people live in apartment complexes are not notorious for showing up and stuff.
I get it. I was just suggesting that...
Yeah, that's one way.
That's one way. Well, we've got other things in mind.
But, you know, maybe something in their mailboxes or tag on the door. I don't know. Just, we don't want anybody showing up here going, "I didn't know anything about you." I mean, you know, they see it every day, but people don't always pay attention till it starts waking them up at, you know, 3:00 in the morning or whatever time it is. I don't know.
All right. Can we make a motion on this resolution with the change to the timeline to be, I don't know what the date would be, for four months from now, or how that works?
Well, this, this month is almost over. So, I'd say July, August, September.
It's gonna be four months from tonight.
October.
Sure.
But, and then come back in September for an extension, rather than waiting until...
Or a second meeting in October would be October 21st.
Yeah, that's good.
Seconded.
All right. There was a motion to approve with the modified date, Resolution Number 20-18. Call the roll.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. So, I, I think all of the other items will, will move.
Yeah, before we adjourn, I was gonna ask the city manager, since I left that report at home, so Report 20317 that we approved, what's our extension on the, uh, emergency declaration?
Oh, that wasn't here, was it?
I'm sorry. What was the, the, the date that I, that I chose?
Yeah, Report 20317, we're extending the state of emergency declaration.
I think through September, if I remember correctly.
Through September.
Sorry.
I have to pull it up, but I'm pretty sure it was, um...
It's the one I left on the kitchen table, so...
Um, uh, declaring, um, we'll extend the state of emergency to August 6th, 2020.
Oh, August, sorry. Okay. I was off.
Which is the date. We have a meeting on August 5th.
And is that emergency declaration expiring? Are we, are we did that? It was on the...
Yeah, we did, but I just...
It was on the consent, so we're good. Okay, good.
Just in case somebody's still watching the, um, the date. And again, I apolo, I apologize. I did not mean in any way that, that we had, you know, keen decision-making, but what I was saying is the reason I would want to go on is that I sort of exist in the night. So, I'm, I'm still awake. Not everybody is a night person. Some people are day people, and they, they're ready to fold up at, you know, 9:30. I'm, I'm, I won't be folding up for a while.
All right. Uh, Mr. Conkle, do you have anything for us?
At the, no, nothing for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Commission, any other communication comments?